Good evening everyone, we do appear to have a quorum. Pursuant to section five four nine five six of the California Government Code. A special meeting of the city council is hereby called for October eleventh twenty twenty two at five thirty P M. And could we get a roll call please Margaret?
Councilmember Mendoza?
Here.
Councilmember Meyer?
Here.
Councilmember Rary?
Here.
Mayor Bryant?
Here.
And let the record reflect that Vice Mayor Rodriguez is absent.
Okay, at this time we will open public comments, I'll turn it to you Margaret.
I received zero just just now I'm having some feedback hold on just a. Okay my apologies. I received at this time the public is permitted to address the city council on items that are on the closed session agenda. I received zero written public comments on this item that were submitted to the city clerk prior to the meeting. If you wish to speak under public comment please raise your hand using the zoom feature. I'll call your name if provided and immediately to speak. Remarks are limited to three minutes per person and your microphone will be muted after the timer has expired. While we encourage your comments state law prevents the city council from discussing items that are not on their meeting agenda. If appropriate staff will follow up on them and I'm seeing no hands raised.
Thank you, at this time then we will close public comment and do I have a motion to recess to close session?
So moved.
Second.
We have a first and a second roll call vote please.
Councilmember Mendoza?
Yes.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Rary?
I.
Vice Mayor Rodriguez? It's absent, Mayor Bryant?
I.
Motion carries with Vice Mayor Rodriguez absent.
Okay, we are recessed to close session and I'll see you over there.
Good evening, everyone. Looks like we do have a quorum. At this time, we will reconvene the Council Successor Agency and BIFA agenda of October eleventh, twenty twenty-two from closed session. There is nothing to report out of closed session at this time. And Margaret, could I get a roll call, please?
Councilmember Mendoza?
Here.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yeah.
Councilmember Rary?
Yeah.
Vice Mayor Rodriguez?
There.
Mayor Bryant?
Here. Okay, we do have a quorum. If you could join with me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Again, there is nothing to report out of closed session. At this time, we will open public comments. I'll turn it to you, Margaret.
At this time, the public is permitted to address the city council on items that are not on the agenda. Items listed under informational reports are on the consent calendar. Request for future agenda items, new request. Please save your comments for any other items that are on the agenda for that part of the meeting when you have the opportunity to provide them. I received zero written public comments on this item that were submitted to the city clerk prior to the meeting. If you wish to speak under public comment, please raise your hand using the Zoom feature. I'll call your name if provided. And then meet you to speak. Remarks are limited to three minutes per person and your microphone will be muted after the timer has expired. While we encourage your comments, state law prevents the city council from discussing items that are not on their meeting agenda. And if appropriate, staff will follow up on them. I do currently have three hands raised. I'll start with Danny Dorman after I share my screen. Mr. Dorman, go ahead.
Great, thank you. Good evening. I'm surprised, but not surprised about the nothing to report. I can't imagine why there isn't anything to report. Because you guys got together and you got in closed section. So, yeah, the appropriate statement would be probably there's nothing we could tell you. That honestly, I can accept. Can't speak for anyone else. Okay, four weeks from now, the city of Brentwood's council will change. It is disappointing that we have only heard from a few people. And that was at the roundtable last week. From what I understand, and I may be wrong, it sounds like there may be a couple of people who won't join tomorrow's roundtable, which is really concerning. I don't know why. I would love to know why. At least the last week, one didn't attend because he was celebrating his twenty-fifth wedding anniversary in Hawaii. And as much as I love the city, I probably wouldn't have shown up either. The fact is that in four weeks, we will have at least one person who doesn't know anything about Brentwood politics. Whether it's because lack of participating in meetings like these, lack of any information other than what maybe they see on Facebook or hear from the usual suspects in the usual districts. And that is sad. Because they're going to affect our lives for the next four years, whether we like it or not. And having folks who are their platform is running on how people don't like to engage with one another in a parliamentary form. You know, that's the worst reason because regardless, the two people who are leaving will be gone and the people who are active in their opinions will be there and whoever wins will have to deal with them anyway. So, and that's just one. Don't have enough time to talk about everyone else, but I really hope people show up tomorrow. And I hope the best for our city. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Diego Hernandez. Diego, go ahead.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, go ahead.
Ah, yes. Thank you for, for taking my call. I'm a, I'm a new resident here to Brentwood. I moved late last year. And, you know, I, I just got praises to say about this city. You know, I really loved Veterans Park off of Belfer Road. My kids go to Brentwood Elementary. Hoping to get them into Brentwood Aquatic, the classes at the Brentwood Aquatic Complex soon or sometime next year. I just got nothing, good, great things to say about the city. Um, yes, I echoed the gentleman's the last speaker's opinion that we are gonna have new council members. And we're looking forward to have, have these new council members working for this, for the city. However, I am also concerned and I'm not sure where to find information on the proposed Costco in Brentwood. I know there's, there's, you know, forums and blogs and all that, but I haven't seen anything from, from, from the website. Or maybe because it's still too soon. I don't know. I'm hoping to see something sooner than later. Looking forward to hearing the mitigation and all that good stuff that comes along with new developments. And once again, you know, just thank you for the call. Thank you for allowing me to speak and just create job.
Margaret, if we could-
My apologies. I had somehow had myself muted and could not get unmuted.
Before we go to the next speaker, if I could just have those in staff that could get in touch with Mr. Hernandez, if possible. Or if Mr. Hernandez, if you could call the city staff and they will be able to give you what information is available currently regarding your questions of on Costco. And thank you very much for participating. Turn it back to you, Margaret.
The next speaker is Carolina Villaseca. Carolina, go ahead.
Thank you. Good morning, City Council. Good morning. Oh, my God, I'm fried. Good evening, City Council. Sorry about that. I wanted to, again, this week, remind you that this this weekend on the sixteenth of October from eleven AM to six PM, please come down to City Park and celebrate Diwali. There will be rangoli, there will be games, food vendors and a fashion show. I saw a preview this past weekend. It was so cute. There were the cutest little kids all dressed up and they were beautiful bright colors. And the textiles are just astonishing. There will be cultural performances, raffles and much more. You can get your tickets at, and I'm desperately looking for the if you look up United Indian Association, the link will be there to buy tickets. The tickets are six dollars a person. So I encourage everybody to come down. Diwali is open to everybody. The Indian Unity the United Indian Association is hosting this event to share their culture with everyone in Brentwood and in the surrounding cities. It's a lovely time to meet people and try foods you may not have tried before. They have some fantastic jewelry and clothing and bags and all shawls. I went a little crazy this past weekend. I went shopping at an event that they hosted. It is a different event than Diwali. But anyways, I hope to see as many of you as possible. I know some city council members will be out of town. But I expect to see the rest of you dancing in a lot right along with me. That's you, Mayor Joel, you, Johnny Rodriguez, Vice Mayor, and Karen Rary. Hope to see y'all there. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Daniel Garcia, followed by Cenziana Todor. Daniel, go ahead.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Good evening, City Council. My name is Daniel Garcia. I just wanted to say that I am extremely happy with all of the new proposed development projects going on in the city of Brentwood from single-family homes, apartments and mixed-use projects. I work in the construction industry as an operator for Local Three and find myself having to commute to San Francisco and San Jose on a daily. Thanks to projects like these, I can work close to home. I currently live in the city of Antioch, close to the BART station. I one day wish to move my family to the city of Brentwood. I find it to be an ideal place to raise a family. Top rated schools, award-winning parks and hiking trails. I can't wait to see what the city looks like a couple of years from now as it continues to modernize and grow. With that being said, I would like to thank you for your time and your commitment to the city of Brentwood.
Thank you. The next speaker is Cenziana Todor, followed by Amy Tilly. Cenziana, go ahead.
Hello, good evening, City Council. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I would like to start by expressing my gratitude and offering my congratulations to the Downtown Coalition and the city of Brentwood for putting on such an amazing Oktoberfest event this past weekend. The attendance was incredible and I'm really hoping to see some stats on the impact on our downtown businesses for this event. I, I think we should encourage more of this. It's been such a nice, family-friendly event that really benefited the whole city and most likely the whole region. Also, I would like to talk about a couple of conversations that I had with residents during this week about the Blue Goose Park. There is a lot of, a lot of vandalism going on, noise violation and also I've seen some tagging on the bathrooms. So I need to submit a ticket for that through Brentwood Connect twenty-four seven. But I would like to, if possible, to direct the staff and community enrichment members to take a look at what's going on at this park and make it a safe place for everyone to enjoy. Also, I, park rules in general, it looks like they're posted just in English. So a couple of residents brought up the fact that possibly will be beneficial to have at least one posting at each park of the regulations in multiple languages. And, yeah, and the last item I would like to bring up is the event that will take place tomorrow. It is another candidate for, City Council Candidates Forum that will be organized by the press as in a collaboration way. Brentwood Senior Club. And it will be held from seven to nine PM at one nine three Griffith Lane in Brentwood. So I hope everyone will take time to come, meet all the candidates, learn more about us and make an informed decision on November eighth. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Amy Tilly, followed by Rod. Amy, go ahead.
Hi there, council and staff. Thank you guys so much for having me. Thank you, Cenziana, for the comments about Oktoberfest. We really appreciate it. So my name is Amy Tilly. I'm the Executive Director for Downtown Brentwood Coalition. And I just wanted to get on here for a quick minute and thank you guys for the support that we received through the Economic Development Program for hosting Oktoberfest. It really allowed us to do some pretty incredible things with it this year that we hadn't thought of before or just didn't feel like were feasible. And the goal was to really wrap our arms around as many other nonprofits, other civic groups, small businesses and the community for this event. And so I just posted the video at Downtown Brentwood for the highlights for the event. And the list I have of people to thank and organizations that were involved is, it's huge. It's just the hugest list. I have to actually make a video for how many organizations I have to thank because I can't even do it in one post. So, you know, we just had so many organizations. We had Harvest Time and the city of Brentwood, the Parks and Rec, the Mobile Recreation Unit was really cool. And I was really happy to see how the family zone blossomed. It was really neat and I got a lot of great feedback and I'm continuing to get great feedback on that. We had, we think we had over fifteen thousand people. We believe this was the highest attendance we've ever had for Oktoberfest. Which is just wild because, you know, we marketed really hard for this event to make sure that people knew that after two years it was happening again. But when it boils down to it, the day of, you know, you find yourself a little nervous, wondering, did I do enough? And when those people started coming in, I realized we had done, done a pretty good job on that. So that was really exciting and it was just so neat to see everyone happy and having a good time. And it was, I feel like people were just well behaved and, and there just to really support the community. And I definitely have a report out that I'll be giving to you guys. But, you know, we had, the businesses were saying we quadrupled our sales this day. This was just this record-setting day for us. And we had all these vendors that- we quadrupled our sales this day. This was just this record-setting day for us. And um we had all these vendors that, you know, got City of Brentwood business licenses to, to be able to do um operate that day. And those are people that we encourage to, you know, continue to do business here, continue to grow your small business here. And that license makes sense for you because, you know, this is something that you can do and, and you can turn from a pop-up, you know, maybe into a small business. That's what we've seen a lot of ours do. So um so many people to thank. Stay tuned for that. The full video is on our website at BrentwoodDowntown.com. But um just wanted to say thank you guys so much and we look forward to making some changes for next year to make it even better.
Thank you. The next speaker is Rod, followed by RT. Rod, go ahead.
Yes, thank you. Um, I went to the, the candidate forum on Wednesday last and uh not unusual for uh candidate forums here in Brentwood. A lot of the candidates are really uninformed about what goes on in the city. Um, I think other than Cenziana Todor, who is a frequent contributor here, and that's no coincidence. That's why people are informed is because they come here to listen to these. Um, but I, I heard, and I'll, I'll give you some just for the, for the amusement of it, but I'm, I, I do have a point. Um, somebody said that uh they had heard a lot of talk about defund the police and that wasn't going to happen here. And of course, that never happens here at this city council. There's um always support for the police department. I've heard Chief Hanson say many times that he's very grateful for the fact that he's never been turned away when he had to ask for something. Somebody said they'd like to reduce the reserve to increase the BPD budget, not that it needs increasing and um decreasing the reserve would uh expose us to a credit risk, um make it harder for us to get money and could damage the city's ability to uh respond in the event of an actual emergency. Somebody said Measure Q was because uh the city council uh decided to punt some decision to the voters that they didn't really name what decision it was you guys were supposed to be punting. Uh, and that's just couldn't be farther from the truth. It was done to protect the, the city from state regulations and from um decisions in the future like building City Hall and all that stuff on City Park costing us the Corn Fest. You know, uh, building Sand Creek Road out through Antioch, um ending Zoom public comments, that's crazy. Uh, fire, schools, the Health Department, uh, none of which are under the city council's jurisdiction. HCD has an eighty percent requirement. No, they don't. Uh, they, they don't have a figure for that anywhere. It's, it was just a suggestion by the staff. Um, and again, Cenziana was probably the only exception to this, but most of her comments were on target. But um the reason I, I bring it up is I really worry that we're not doing enough to um help Brentwoodians know what goes on at City Council and what the city of Brentwood does and what it doesn't do. How it all works and how it all gets paid for. And, and I, I am not here today to suggest a solution. You guys are doing great um with the, with the newsletter that's going out now with uh the website improvements. Um I, I just, without a, a local news outlet like a um, a news station, a TV station, we, we do have a paper that sort of gives some coverage, maybe two. Um, so I don't know what the answer to this is, but it, it is very clear to me that the uh, the public in Brentwood just doesn't know enough about what's going on. And they should. They, they have a right to know and they have a right to participate and to understand. And I hope that we'll continue um having Zoom public comment for that purpose. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is RT, followed by Pat Tanisha Pearson. RT, go ahead. RT, can you unmute? I will go ahead and skip our, oh no. RT, are you able to unmute? I will go ahead and come back to RT. Pat Tanisha, go ahead.
Good afternoon to Council and to the residents of Brentwood. Uh, my name is Pat Tanisha Davis Pearson and I'm so glad to join you all now. I'm joining you from a cruise ship off the coast of Rome for my anniversary. So I apologize for my, my physical absence tomorrow, but uh at the forum that Cenziana Todor spoke about. I want to thank the uh press and uh the Chamber of Commerce for providing a forum for candidates to speak and for the residents of Brentwood to get to know everyone. I also want to thank Council for acknowledging and you seeing um on the agenda, I saw that there is an opportunity that Council will be speaking about our youth. And I know there is a misunderstanding sometime of, of people to understand where the district, school district comes in and where Sid, the city comes in. But I appreciate that the city is trying to look into activities or what we can do for our youth uh recently in City Park. I've noticed two fights on two separate days in the same week. And I think that our children just need more opportunities and more places and activities to go. So I appreciate that being added. And I appreciate our city staff for all the summer activities that we had this summer. Additionally, I want to thank and acknowledge, um, I made a report, a huge tree had fallen um in District Two, and I called in immediately. City staff while on the weekend came and removed the tree from the passageway. So I thank you all for that. And I just appreciate the things that are going on in our city. I'm so grateful that we've had new residents who are showing up and asking questions. And Mr. Mayor, thank you for just stopping this to make sure that the questions were answered. Other than that, um, I'm looking forward to just getting to know more people and attending more events in our city. And I'm just grateful for the progress that we are currently making and think that a more positive outlook is what we need to be looking forward to. Thank you all and have a wonderful night.
Thank you. The next speaker is RT. RT, go ahead. RT, go ahead.
Okay, sorry. Um, yeah, I just uh, I'm just amazed of what the city of Brentwood's doing. Uh, they're doing so much. Uh, you get such a wonderful feel when you, you know, wake up and go out. There's so much to do, so much retail and um, I would just like to see the city grow to its fullest potential, you know, um such as downtown, you know, getting bigger, the Innovation Center. Um, I would like to see stuff, you know, at least probably twenty-four hours open or at least till two. Um, I like that there's a lot of retail and restaurants. Um, and I don't know why there's so many gas stations on Brentwood Boulevard. It's I, I guess there's a reason for that, but I, I, I would just like to see more retail and um the city just, is just beautiful. I mean, everything about the city from landscape, curb appeal, housing, parks, trails, I can go on and on. Um, so thank you for all you do.
Thank you. The next speaker is Brandon Hayna. Brayden, I'm sorry. Brayden. Hayna, go ahead, Brayden.
There we go. Well, good evening, Council. I just wanted to come on real quick. Don't want to take up too much of your time. Um, it was already covered by the previous, uh, well, the other two candidates, uh, my district. Uh, but we have the Senior Citizens Forum uh tomorrow night. It's at seven o'clock. Uh, that's at one-nine-three Griffith Lane. Um, the, the club is hosting uh the forum. Um, I, I think the, the forum last uh Thursday at Heritage was fantastic. Uh, it was a good turnout. It was a good opportunity uh for us candidates, you know, to, to let the Brent, Brent, Brentwood idiot, whatever they call them, uh. Tell our citizens what we're about, what the candidates are about, what we're, what we're, what we plan to do uh when we get on the council, how we want to help our city grow, how we want to bring our community together um and, and really improve the quality of life in our city uh as, as it's, as we've seen it happen before. Um, you know, I've said it so many times, I would not want to live anywhere else uh in the world uh than Brentwood. Um, and what I want to do is I, I want to bring that same energy onto the council and um, help our great city breach the possibilities that I know that it can. So again, I'm just inviting uh all of you listening uh to the forum tomorrow night. That's at uh one-nine-three Griffith Lane, uh, the Senior Citizens Forum. And I can't wait to see you all there, shake some hands and, and let you guys know what I'm about. So thank you, Council. I hope you guys have a great night and a great meeting.
Thank you. The next speaker is David Main. Mr. Main, go ahead.
Hello, my name's David Main. Um, my family owns the property that is on the corner of the Priority One Project where the mixed-use area has been proposed. Um, I wanted to take a moment to give you an update on the situation with that. Since your last decision back in September, um all the developers have fallen out. Uh, we've spent an exhaustive amount of time trying to find somebody who is interested in doing mixed-use development. So far, we've found none. We've turned to the city developers. Um, the city developers don't have anyone for us to even speak to. Um, while the Priority One Project is a great idea in many respects, the mixed-use area is, it just doesn't work. It's like trying to put, you know, an escalator in the bathroom. It doesn't make sense. And people aren't looking for a mixed use. Your own consultants told you that, you know, people are not looking for a mixed use as well as I know that in downtown Pittsburgh, because I have a friend who lives in that particular complex who's on the board. Their security prices are, are through the roof because they have to deal with twenty-four-hour security because when you do mixed use, you know, those places become a target at night. And we all know, you're already hearing from other people about issues in the parks, and this becomes just another park at night. Um, I would strongly encourage you to take time and adjust. I know that you were sold a bill of goods, that this was the project, this was the way to go. I think quite candidly, if you want mixed use, put the retail side over on the commercial side, like the first floor, like they do at the Abarcadero in San Francisco. You have a great option there. It separates people who are residential from um people who want to be out later, who want to have a restaurant, who's going to have music, who's going to have a store that's going to have music. You don't have the conflict that you do by putting mixed use in the same place. Furthermore, this is not an urban environment and you really need an urban environment to bring it there. Even the proposed BART station, the parking's on the other side of the freeway. So you have even less traffic going through there. And it just won't work. More so, there's no developers that have an appetite for this. So if you continue down this path, you know, you will fail on the, you're going to fail in the project one, Priority One project. And, you know, we told you this before. You didn't listen. Now I'm in a situation where I have five and a half acres of land. My parents have passed and I don't have a buyer for it. And I won't get a buyer for it based on your use. Thank you.
Thank you. I do have another hand raised. Jacob? Jacob, go ahead.
Hi, Council. Um, thanks for having me and it's a pleasure to, to meet you all finally. Uh, I've been away uh on my uh wedding anniversary in Hawaii. Uh, just the question that came up right now for the mixed use in a, at PA One. And I bring the attention, you know, there's uh, there's a company you know, south called Irvine Company, you know, uh thirty years ago, Irvine was in the same situation where Brentwood is right now. Uh, you know, we, we could approach that. I, I would probably give the contact up to the uh city and the city manager to contact the Irvine Company and invite them over here. See what that can do for Brentwood, you know? Uh, there, there are few companies out there in Fullerton and Irvine, uh Pinnacle and Irvine Company. They are the biggest name. And PA One, without the mixed use, will defeat the purpose. You know what? Uh, we, we cannot just put uh thousands of houses and, and not create jobs, you know? It has to be uh head and glove going together. And, and I hope that we will move forward for PA One to, to create jobs and to create housing. We need both. You know, we, we need to plan for the house, for the jobs first and the housing going to follow. And, and if we just go for the housing, uh our resources are very limited. What will happen after, after we are done with streets? You know, uh clog our retail centers, you know? Uh, right now, eighty percent of the Brentwood spend their money outside of Brentwood, you know? Uh, to other retail centers, to our other job site and, and everything. So we need to, for businesses that are willing to come over here, we, we need to have a right approach. Uh, bring these people in, in there and, and, and then we can go from there, you know? Um, I think city has done, our city employees has done a great, uh, great job. Most of the time they're behind the scenes. Uh, no, no one can give them a pat on their back. But the streets are well maintained. The uh, you know, it looks beautiful. Christmas is coming. It, I, I know the lights and, and things will be out there on that was Brentwood, but let's be focused on one common goal to, uh, to make Brentwood a city that, uh, that will uh define our future and our kids' future. And thank you for having me over here. I'm looking forward for the forum tomorrow. And it's uh, it's an exciting time right now. So thank you.
Thank you. I do have another hand raised. Lillian? Lil, go ahead.
Hang on. Hello?
Got you. There you go.
Thanks, Margaret. Um, once again, I would like to thank the city of Brentwood for its decades of continued support for the Brentwood Regional Community Chest. Um, I want to tell you what our dates are and invite everyone to come and participate if you, if you're available. Um, the good news is, is we're going back to pre-COVID restrictions. So we will have, the Rotary Club will be making breakfast for all of our volunteers and our recipients. And um, we're gonna, and um, let me give you the dates. And then I can explain the rest. Um, on December thirteenth and fifteenth, we'll, we'll be, we will be sorting and packing toys. Um, on the sixteenth at Brentwood Elementary School, we will be sorting and packing food. Um, a lot of you have been there that evening. It's very hectic and chaotic and a whole lot of fun. Um, on the seventeenth, also at Brentwood Elementary School, our distribution will start in the morning around seven, seven o'clock uh is when most of the volunteers show up. Uh, let's see, what else do I have on my list here? Um, breakfast. Oh, this year we're hoping to serve about five hundred families again. Um, you know, Brentwood was founded by my mom on her idea of a uh community supporting its own. And Brentwood certainly does that. We have a rec, we have a wonderful community we live in. People are very generous. The city is very generous. The schools are very generous with their support. Um, and I think that what I think that's all I really had to say, other than uh Joel, uh Kevin King said to tell you hello. And that's it?
Thank you, Lil. And I have no additional hands raised?
Thank you. At this time, then we will close public comment and move into uh informational reports from council members, committees, liaisons and staff. And then we'll begin with Councilmember Mendoza.
Hello, um, I attended the candidate forum. Um, I do agree with the comment that there's a lot of misinformation from what I heard. Some I'm trying, when I was sitting there, I was trying to think about how we could do a better job. Like, what are we missing if there's so many points that were wrong from the candidates. So is it us or is it just them not? Like, I just, we need to figure it out. He was right on that. We need the right information out there. Um, went to the chief of police, final sign-off for Chief Hanson, and then the sign-off for Chi- Chief Herbert. So it was bittersweet altogether. Had a Cali meeting about water. Um, water's a big deal. For us, it's also a big deal in development. Um, I don't know if you know, East Bay Mud is actually suing Contra Costa County for a development that they approved that they say don't have water on. So it's kind of a big deal all around. Um, our neighborhood voices, we continue to have um Wednesday night part, you know, informational meetings to see if you want to have house parties. We still want to get that constitutional amendment to bring back uh land use zoning control to the cities. And I, and I attended Oktoberfest. And I have to say, I was blown away. I have not been to anything like that since the Corn Fest and others. I can't believe how many people said it was like a mini Corn Fest. I mean, I think the only thing it was missing was the rides that they used to have. It was fantastic. I'm hoping that um the City Park and Rec will partner with the Downtown Brentwood Coalition for the seventy-fifth because if we can do anything like that for the seventy-fifth, I mean, I, it'll be amazing. So I'm hope, I'm not sure where they are with the seventy-fifth planning. But if you're going to partner with someone, I think it should be the Downtown Brentwood Coalition. And I'll be the first one to say, like, I was a little bit apprehensive about spending money on that. And I think it's some of the best money we've spent. Downtown was super busy all day. And then at night, I heard it was super busy all night also. So thank you to them. And that's it.
Thank you. Uh, Councilmember Meyer?
Thank you. Um, also attended the farewell to former Chief Hanson and the swearing-in of Chief Herbert. And I would agree with the, the bittersweet terminology that was hearing that final- And I would agree with the bittersweet terminology that was hearing that final, that sign off, whatever they did through the radios, that was very moving. I attended the Chamber of Commerce Diversity Event. Attended the City Council Candidate Forum at Heritage. I was part of the the lamp lighting ceremony for the inaugural South Asian Ball Festival by Muk Tangan. And the festival celebrates good over evil. Muk Tangan is a fairly new nonprofit that addresses in part abuse against women and children. An amazing, amazing group of people and I, I don't think I've ever felt so welcomed and honored to be a part of something like that and to to bring additional opportunities for education and culture and diversity to our city was just a huge honor. I also want to shout out to Amy Tilly and the Downtown Business Coalition and Amy, you mentioned you weren't sure if you did enough. You definitely did enough. You did amazing. Absolutely worth the, the cost of the admission that I, that we paid. Just really amazing event. Multiple conversations and phone meetings with residents about the PA one project. A meeting with the League of Cities to discuss incoming applicants to policy committees and the presidential appointment process that I get to do. And then had some meetings with nonprofits who had questions about the Dia de los Muertos event at the end of the month at Azuca and Brentwood Boulevard because there was some interest in whether they could buy booths for resource sharing, that kind of thing. And so I turn them over to Miguel, the organizer. And that is it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Rary.
Well, I was gone for, for a week, so I, I don't have a list like theirs, but I do have a few things. I, I also attended Chief Hanson's retirement and the swearing in of Chief Herbert. I've known Tom or Chief Hanson for, gosh, twenty years now and it was bittersweet. He he was very responsive as an officer, but he did so much for our community as, as the chief of police. And I, I got teary eyed again, like, like Councilmember Meyer had said, the, the the last call, I think it was, it's, it is, and they, they call, come in and they, they speak over the, their radios and, and tell the chief the things that they appreciated about him. And it was coming in from, from different people on the, on the police force and it was very bittersweet. And I, I do wish him the best of luck in Arizona. And, and he's also talked about maybe running for, you know, a state office. So let's, let's keep our thoughts with him for that. I also attended the John Marsh and Star Trust Meeting this Saturday from ten to four at the John Marsh House. They will be having their, I believe it's the sixth annual Heritage Day. This year is celebrate the bounty of East County. Savor local produce, wines and olive oil. There will be wine tasting there. And also the olive oil tasting. They will be doing the preview of the life of John Marsh film that the trust has been working on for a little over a year now. There, you'll be able to peek into the stone house. There'll be areas where you can kind of go in a little bit. State Parks is not allowing us to go all the way in because it's not, it still needs more stabilization. You can reenact things like roping, learning how to rope or brand or doing leather work. They're gonna have a dance group, the Los Arribas de San Francisco will come out and perform music and do dance of the early Californians. And, and then you could hear about the State House construction, the interpretive center plans, the agricultural story and the Marsh Creek restoration and trail extensions that will be going through the park. It, it's a free family event and I hope everybody will make it out there to learn about the how, actually how ag started in East County. It started at the John Marsh House. And, and so come out and learn more about it. And that is all I have to report. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Rodriguez.
Yes, Mayor, I don't have anything to report out, but I did want to mention, I was out of town this weekend with my son at a wrestling tournament and wasn't able to attend Oktoberfest, but had a lot of family and friends that were able to attend. And they said nothing but wonderful things about the event. It did remind them a lot about the Corn Fest and I know, I mean, I worked at Corn Fest for about fourteen years. You know, so I know if it was like the Corn Fest, it must have been a really good event and real, well attended. So I just heard a lot of really positive things from the community. So I just want to let the Downtown Coalition know that they did a wonderful job and I hope they continue to do the same work in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. And before I go over my list, I also was out of state for a week. For those many people who, who were trying to get in touch with me while I was out of state, I was often away from the ability to be on a phone. And so when I landed, right before council meeting, drove in from Oakland, I have over a hundred voicemails. Most of them from community members that were kind enough to leave a voicemail. I, I really wanted to be at the Oktoberfest. It, it just was something I was looking forward to. I'm so sorry I wasn't able to miss, what, be there and had to miss it, but Amy Tilly and the Downtown Brentwood Coalition are just superstars in everything they've done so far. I'm really excited about the direction that they're going. But I do have a few things I have to report on. I attended the Chamber of Commerce Business Diversity Event. This event is something that I would love to see more of the community made aware of. A lot of the big movers and shakers in, in technology, in, in medicine, in many different kinds of businesses that we would love to have partnering and coming into Brentwood. Were there almost exclusively minority owned. And we even had a representative from Apple there that was telling us and, and the local businesses as different ways to be involved with Apple. And, and how that even our local companies that reside here in Brentwood, there's a pathway to, to become a vendor for services for Apple. It was really a great event. And so I want to thank the Chamber of Commerce for putting that on. Also attended the police chief's final call out and swearing in of Chief Herbert. And like everyone else, it was very bittersweet. And I do want to thank Chief Hanson for all of the years of service that he gave our community. And with that, I have nothing further to report. This time we'll move into the consent calendar. I would like to pull item B two. And if there's no other items that would like to be pulled, do I have a motion for the consent calendar?
I make a motion to adopt the consent calendar except for item B two.
Second?
We have a first and a second. Margaret?
I'll read the ordinance title for item B four, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Brentwood amended chapter two point zero eight. Mayor and council member salaries and benefits of the Brentwood Municipal Code to increase city council monthly salaries. Councilmember Mendoza?
Yes.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Rary?
Hi.
Vice Mayor Rodriguez?
Hi.
Mayor Bryant?
Hi.
Motion carries unanimous?
Okay, the reason I pulled item B two is because we have a proclamation regarding World Polio Day. And we also have Mike Crosby, who is a past president of the Rotary Club of Brentwood to receive it this evening. So I'm going to read the proclamation. It says, whereas Rotary is a global network of neighbors, friends, leaders and problem solvers who unite and take action to create lasting change in communities across the globe. And whereas the Rotary motto, motto, service above self inspires members to provide humanitarian service, follow high ethical standards and promote goodwill and peace in the world. Whereas Rotary in nineteen eighty-five launched Polio Plus and in nineteen eighty-eight helped establish the Global Polio Eradication Initiative, which today includes the World Health Organization, U.S. Centers for Disease Control and Prevention, UNICEF and the Bill and Melinda Gates Foundation and GAVI, the Vaccine Alliance to immunize the children of the world against polio. And whereas polio cases have dropped by ninety-nine point nine percent since nineteen eighty-eight and the world stands on the threshold of eradicating the disease. And whereas to date Rotary has contributed more than two point two billion dollars and countless volunteer hours to protecting nearly three billion children in one hundred twenty-two countries. And whereas Rotary is working to raise an additional fifty million per year, which would be leveraged for maximum impact by the, an additional one hundred million annually from the Bill and Melinda Gates Foundation. And whereas these efforts are providing much needed operational support, medical staff, laboratory equipment and educational materials for health workers and parents. And whereas in addition Rotary has played a major role in decisions by donor governments to contribute more than ten billion dollars to the effort. And whereas there are over one point two million Rotary members in thirty-six thousand clubs throughout the world that sponsor service projects to address such critical issues as poverty, disease, hunger, illiteracy and the environment in their local communities and abroad. Now therefore be it proclaimed, the City Council of the City of Brentwood does hereby proclaim October twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-two World Polio Day. And encourage all citizens to join me and Rotary International in the fight for a polio-free world dated this eleventh day of October, twenty twenty-two. And if we could have Mr. Crosby come, if you would like to receive this on behalf of the Rotarians in Brentwood. And if you'd like to speak for a moment regarding this proclamation.
Mayor Bryant, thank you and thank you, council members, for your sustained support of all the things that Rotary does. You've been so eloquent in stating what we do. I would like to also invite any of you subject to the Brown Act to come to our meeting on Monday, October twenty-fourth. Mayor Bryant will be there, I understand, to actually give us that proclamation. And also you're going to receive an up-to-date information about polio, including what's going on in New York, should we be concerned. So I, I want to say again that Rotary would not be in existence without the support of the City of Brentwood. Just a few weeks ago, we had a Pints for Polio event in the city park. We netted over twenty-five thousand dollars. Half of that money goes to end polio. The other half is going entirely for local scholarships. So we care about our city. You all know that. It should be the gliding, blinding glimpse of the obvious that we are a part of this city and we are proud in our seventy-three years of being supporting you. And Mayor, I want to thank you and the council again for your sustained support. We continue to be here for you. We are here to serve our community and thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Crosby. At this time, we will move into public hearings. Item C one pertains to updating
Mr. Mayor? Before we get into that, could I just do one quick report out since it's timely?
Yes, please.
I just wanted, residents have received ballots here either today or this week. And there is a local land use ballot measure. City staff and city resources are not being used to advocate for this project one way or the other. However, staff is available to answer questions or even present to homeowners association if you, if they would like. They can find additional information about the ballot measure. Nonpartisan not pushing one way or the other at the city's website of BrentwoodCA.gov slash measure Q. So if residents have questions, they can call the city manager's office and we can set up a time for someone to come out and present to any of their homeowners associations or any other group that they would like a presentation from. So that was the timely one. And then in honor of Pink October, our police department has a, a new interceptor, or I should say an interceptor with updated logos. Hopefully you're not seeing this in your rearview mirror with lights on, but hopefully you're seeing it driving around town to bring awareness to Breast Cancer Awareness Month and Pink October. So thank you, Mayor.
Mr. Mayor, before we move on, don't we need to make a motion on C two?
Me too. Yes, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Rary. I was just popping on for the same thing.
So with, with that, I would move approval of item B two.
I'll second that.
We have a first and a second roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Mendoza?
Yes.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Rary?
Whoa. I was, I, I hit the leave button instead of so I was left, I.
Vice Mayor Rodriguez?
Hi.
Mayor Bryant?
Hi.
Motion carries unanimous?
Thank you. At this time, then we will move into item C one pertains to updating the PA one specific plan. And Darren Gale and Joshua will present staff report. Darren?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members. We're appreciate the opportunity to be before you this evening to present a recommendation from the Planning Commission. Josh has a very short presentation to talk about the differences between what was recommended from the City Council to the Planning Commission and what the council has, has before you this evening for, for consideration. Josh? Josh, we're not, we're not hearing you.
How about now? Sounds good. Okay, great. Thank you, Mr. Gale. Joshua, you in Senior Analyst with Economic Development, City Manager's Office. Mr. Mayor, council members, thank you for your time this evening. I'll go through a recap of where we've been the last three weeks or so and ask for additional direction on consideration of the PA one specific plan and future actions related to updating that plan and putting a land use diagram in place. So staff and, and city council as well, the Planning Commission has been engaged on the priority area one specific plan since roughly June of this year. And we've been able to do a lot of coordination and receiving direction from the city council related to what their overall vision is for PA one in order to create a jobs generating business park as well, as well as a mixed use campus. These are, those actions that were sequential from when we first went to the Planning Commission in June twenty-one of this year, followed by additional public hearings and public workshops with the city council to really focus in and hone in on your vision for the PA one specific plan. On September thirteenth, the city council provided review and direction of an updated map known as Alternative C and directed the Planning Commission to provide further analysis and review of that action as well as consider making a full recommendation back to the city council of that alternative C as well as the specific plan red lines to the text amendment and additional items that go along with the specific plan itself. On September twentieth, staff presented the Planning Commission with your direction and held a public hearing for their, for their consideration to provide you a recommendation. After much deliberation, the Planning Commission did recommend some adjustments to Alternative C in which has been shown in your current report as Alternative D and I'll summarize those in the next slide. They are recommending Alternative D as a recommended land use plan for city council to consider an adoption. And tonight, the city council has the opportunity to adopt Alternative C or Alternative D and provide further direction and related approvals of the PA one specific plan. So looking at these two land use maps, Alternative C is city council's direction of September thirteenth. That plan was provided to the Planning Commission on September twentieth in a, in a full public hearing that was fully noticed to all of the property owners and adjoining residents. The Planning Commission, as I mentioned, after deliberation and analysis of your direction, requested two changes. Uh requested two uh changes that uh are part of Alternative D. One, the arrow labeled as item one is a change from regional commercial. To transit village mixed-use land use designation for about four acres north of McCallum Trail. Second was a request and recommendation to reduce about nine acres of transit village mixed-use. And to have that replaced with Employment Center Light Industrial or E C L I as a um. Overall uh contiguous extension of the purple or E C L I on the um Alternative C. Which is now Alternative uh D for your consideration. There were some uh additional minor changes that can be uh elaborated on a little bit more. Uh but they're really nuanced, just related to the overall circulation pattern, which you can generally see in the the street grid between Alternative C. And Alternative D. And at the end of the day. The projections of both Alternative C and Alternative D are within the environmental impact report. Threshold that was originally considered in twenty eighteen that we've been elaborating on uh with with the council over the last uh couple meetings. Uh both of both Alternative C and D have the same projected output. Uh that would be within the threshold and so the an addendum to the E I R has been prepared to consider both options. Uh council would be acting tonight uh to consider the environmental impact report addendum. Uh which, as I mentioned, is is consistent with the twenty eighteen uh prepared and adopted E I R. All the potential environmental impacts associated with the proposed modifications would be within that envelope and they've already been evaluated. Uh future projects, so actual development projects would be considered for their own impacts as future development occurs. Planning Commission's recommendation to you this evening is that you consider adopting an addendum to the E I R. Approving a resolution for the specific plan amendment. As well as adopting an ordinance and a first reading to amend the Brentwood Municipal Code uh and zoning map. Uh and with the planning commission's recommendation of Alternative D. As as mentioned, you may uh choose to elect to adopt Alternative C or Alternative D. And provide staff additional direction to future actions with the PA one specific plan. With that, that concludes my brief report. Be glad to answer any questions as well as uh uh assist with conducting the public hearing.
Uh council member Ray.
Um regarding the park or not, it's not even a park. It's the entryway that you have over there by the multifamily, very high-density residential. And I know it's supposed to be an entryway area, but that looks like it's almost two acres worth of park. Um that's in that area. Can you can you tell me how it how much we have over there? Yeah, right there.
Sure. So I would I would um say that's probably about an acre to an acre of ha- and a half. Now, those are gross acreage just for general designation. Um in trying to lay out the land use plan to make it attractive, not only from a marketing standpoint, but as well as giving guidance to a residential or commercial developer. About how the park system would lay out and you're absolutely correct, it would be an entry feature into Innovation Drive.
So. You know, i- if you look over there by the McCallum Trail, that's one acre there, that square. And. I I used to live across the street from One Acre Park and there was a big play area. Um both for little kids and big kids, there was a half a basketball court. And there was lots of brass area to run around in. And. If this if this is just going to be an entryway and we're looking at an acre and a half to two acres. That's a lot of excess things in there unless you're planning on creating a a beautiful park there. Um whether it be, you know, filled with flowers or um, you know, roses or or sitting areas. Uh water features, something like that, that I could see possibly doing there. But to take away from E C L I to i- I know it's just a little tiny bit. But that's one and a half acres there. And I know that over in Pleasanton, they have these beautiful arches. That they do that that is down the street complete. I mean, they just keep doing these arches that that designate that you are in the business area. Um and why aren't we looking at something like that rather taking away more acreage um from E C L I?
Sure. So I mean, this for interpretation really is a land use plan. Um none of the actual improvements have been outlined in terms of exact street alignments, exact park alignments, what the what the park requirement is going to be. Uh ultimately, it'll be up to as development occurs through development applications for the Parks Department to coordinate that in terms of development review. And development applications uh to see what the actual requirement is going to be. Uh here, that requirement for parks would be on the residential, which is the orange or multifamily, very high-density residential. As as a potential dedication and it may be that there's an acre or so of gross acre of gross um area dedicated to this. Um I would say that this has probably been consistent in uh the various iterations with uh the full council. Probably over the last two months or so that a- as it's just a general feature.
Yeah, it just seems like it's gotten bigger since you've since you started. Um and that's been my concern is that it 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 got bigger. Um and and for an entryway, you don't need an acre and a half to two acres. For it for an entryway. Now, if you're going to make it into an actual park. For those that neighborhood, um that that's a different story. But the way you had described it to us before was that this is for an entryway and one and a half to two acres is way too much for that. But that that's something for discussion, but thank you.
Councilmember Meyer.
There I go. Um, thank you. I have a few questions for clarification and I know that we do have some candidates on um on the line. And so I was hoping that you could help with some understanding for public understanding and candidate understanding. Um and one of them is about the designations for commercial. E C L I versus the mixed use versus regional commercial, that kind of thing. And we are hearing a lot from people who are um encouraging increased E C L I. And I was hoping you could share with the public and the candidates why that might be preferable to um some residents. Over some of the other designations.
Uh so Councilmember Meyer, uh I believe your request was to give just quick breakdown of what the land use designations allow by color.
Yes.
Okay, great. I'd be glad to do that. Uh so looking at your maps, uh red is regional commercial. So these are regional, large format to smaller format, commercial uses that attract from a larger market. And attract sales tax and potentially retail type jobs into the city limits. Brown is transit village mixed-use. It's a mixed-use concept that you would see a little bit more of an urban fabric. And the idea that the council had in twenty eighteen as well as still stands today is that this would be a a mixed-use district. With with commercial on the first floor and residential above. And that would lead into a potential future transit village as that comes along uh within the pipeline in PA one. Orange is multifamily, very high-density residential, which is a uh higher-density residential product. Uh probably a little bit more higher density than um. Uh what may be throughout some of the other parts of the community and that's meant to support the jobs and families that would look to uh locate here. Uh with future regional commercial growth and that's residential only. Purple is E C L I or Employment Center Light Industrial. That's everything from business park, class A office, uh traditional office, technology office, research and development. Biosciences, biotech, medical facilities. The idea is to create a a high concentration of jobs within Brentwood and within our city limits. And then the last uh designation is your yellow or high-density residential. And that's generally um a a mid-range uh multifamily uh level of density for residential only.
Thank you. And in looking at employee generation, um which of these commercial designations might result in higher job pay brackets? And it's to speculate.
E C L I.
Okay.
Yeah, so uh we we do in just from an E I R standpoint and these are all projections. We do have an employee generation between both alternatives. At the end of the day, there are some nuances to the way that those are calculated. But what you want to do is preserve as much E C L I as you can to have that class A uh research and development campus here in Brentwood.
And Councilmember Meyer, just to kind of give the idea, uh retail would have your lowest average salaries on average. A tran- the TVM use of the mixed-use transit village would be somewhere in between that and the E C L I. Assuming that there would be some professional jobs, but there also could be some retail jobs associated with that. So on average, those would be higher than just retail, uh but definitely lower than E C L I.
Okay, thank you. And again, my goal is to really just help people understand why we are spending so much time on this. Um another question I had is, say, for example, we designate um uh some acreage for E C L I. Or mixed use for that matter, should probably use mixed use as an example. And we aren't, the the landlords are not getting the response they're hoping. How difficult would it be a year down the road for um for that to come back to us to change it to another kind of commercial designation?
Yeah, so Councilmember Meyer, that's uh we would go through a similar type of process. Um we are currently talking with a variety of developers and including every single developer that I've heard mentioned. Uh but we will take any special contact that someone has uh and make additional contact with those developers. Um but uh i- if if any year, we can't find a developers who's interested in developing. Uh we will be back before the city council discussing those the reasons why they state they're unwilling to develop it. So the council can then make a determination if they would like to change. Uh you know, either use e- either details of the specific plan that, you know, requires certain type of development standards. Um or uh even possibly changing some of the land use designations.
Okay, thank you. Um can you talk a little bit about the circulation network plan if there's what the differences would be between C and D?
Go ahead, Josh.
Thank you. Um I don't have uh circulation plans out, but we can certainly, after public comment, if you'd like to return to that, we I certainly can provide that to you. Uh but just generally, the road network does change a little bit between C and D. Uh currently Innovation Drive and Alternative C included a T intersection here off of um what may be future Pruitt Ranch Ranch Road. Or a to be determined road name here of a a main spine network road that connects in the Sand Creek. Uh so that that has a little bit of a difference in change as well as on the southern side, based on the development pattern, there weren't as much. Um small collector roadways in between uh some of the main roadways. On Alternative D, there is a more defined Innovation Drive that extends all the way out to McCallum Trail. Uh once you get north of this potential Pruitt Ranch Road, we do expect traffic to drop off. But we are showing that there is going to be some roadway connectivity to serve all the the properties that are here. Uh and then you see more of a grid pattern because of some of the shifts in um the the orange M V H D R. To kind of make all the the land use pattern work uh correctly uh based on best practices.
And then, if I could just add one thing, uh if this evening, for example, just going off of Councilmember Rary's comments. If you wanted to say remove the parks from the intersection there um as the entryway. Uh that could have a possible impact on what uh the circulation is. Um because ideally, you would not obviously want to put E C L I this small one-acre parcel right in the middle of of the current, you know. Land use designation that's being identified there. Um if you notice, right, the streets border uh the different types of land use designations. They don't just, you know, pop over, you know, twenty, thirty feet. So if the council does want to make some changes this evening, it it might require us to come back. We're hoping that we can handle it this evening. But uh I'm it's more than just saying, hey, let's change one color to another. Uh there are other impacts as relates to circulation and uh the addendums to the I R that that would need to be updated.
Thank you. Um two more quick questions. Has there been um any more understanding of potential impacts of A B twenty-eleven? On uh I know that there was some discussion at the planning commission meeting that there weren't, there wasn't any um certainty on that one yet.
Uh we don't have any additional uh information other than no matter what the council does this evening, A B twenty-eleven will impact. Uh all parcels zoned commercial um in the city. Uh so uh as as our city attorney's office and our planning department. Uh will be attending probably multiple webinars and seminars to get a better understanding of the impacts that twenty-eleven. Uh and Senate bill will have um the impacts will have here on the city, but I don't have any specifics.
Okay, thank you. Um my last question would be around um previous conversations at Planning Commission and Council. There were questions about comparisons of mixed-use developments with those in other cities and and has there been any analysis of that?
So uh real briefly, we've been working on the updates that the planning commission provided um over the last couple of weeks. And have not been able to dive into each of the the specific properties. I can say that I've quickly reviewed them. Um I would say it's apples to oranges. Uh many of them have much higher densities than what's uh are are being stated here. Um all that being stated, um I think that it demonstrates that there is a market for some type of transit village mixed-use development project. Uh in the community. Um I will say our consultant did recommend more of a horizontal type of of transit village mixed-use. Uh but what we're currently adopting is a vertical that would require uh commercial on top and and. A hundred percent commercial on the first floor. Um and of course, just as you asked earlier, if for some reason we're unable to find a developer that is able to make that work here. We would be back before the city council to describe those issues uh with additional information so the council could then make a determination on what you'd like to do.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have for now.
Councilmember Rary?
This is a fifteen to twenty-year plan. That's what's been said all along. Why are you talking about coming back and changing it in a year?
Yeah, so I think the question has been, uh Councilmember Rary, is they want to see development immediately on the project. Um I I have no problem waiting however long the city council would like to see this project develop. Uh but I've been also told that there's this immediacy that they want to see the project uh developed. So we will bring back information to the city council and then the council gets to make that determination if they want to make a change. I am not recommending right now that you make a change, but the residents. Uh and I've heard from the city council members that they want to see, you know, you know, uh dirt being moved as quickly as possible. Uh so we'll we'll provide the updates and then the council can give us direction if you actually want to see any type of change. So I'm I'm not recommending a change in a year, but.
We we've spent five years doing this from the time we started till now, it's five years. Actually, yeah, five years uh since, four years since it was adopted this month by the city council. And in five years since we started the planning on it and to to even think that. You guys would change it in a year is just blows my mind. This is a fifteen to twenty-year plan and while we want E C L I in there. Um there are developers out there doing it. Pittsburgh Scott and he says that there's problems. Well, if there's problems, why is Pittsburgh doing another couple hundred acres? Contra Costa County has one going in at Bay Point that's um several hundred units over overland. And then we've got the ones out in in Walnut Creek in Concord. So i- it just blows my mind that that we would sit here and even discuss that. That we're going to change it in a year when other cities all around us are bringing in mixed use. I mean, Bay Point, they're going to Bay Point. So why wouldn't they come out here? Um yeah, it just it it blows my mind. And and why why aren't we talking to that developer out that that's developing in Bay Point right now? Um so, yeah, it it just. Anyway.
Okay, if there are no further questions, clarifying questions of staff, at this time, we will open public comment. Margaret?
I'll go ahead and share the speaker screen.
Let me make the announcement that we will now open the public hearing. Uh and now public comments.
Thank you. I received two different public comments on this item. A summary shown on the screen. Full copies of these will be made available on the City Council Agenda's webpage. If you wish to speak on this item, please raise your hand using the Zoom feature. I'll call your name if provided and I need you to speak. Remarks are limited to three minutes per person and your microphone will be muted after the timer has expired. I currently have two hands raised. I'll start with Danny Dorman, followed by David Main. Mister Dorman, go ahead.
There it is. Okay, thank you. I just saw the unmute. Um just really quickly, um. My recommendation is to go with D and the reason is real simple. The planning commission, which you folks or the council appointed. Are your representation of various uh things that are supposed to go out in the city. And so if they are recommending this. And you brought them on board because they're your trust. and you brought them on board because they're, you're trusted in them, your judgment in them, this really should be a layup. Now, with respect to the park and the possible changes. Everyone here knows how I feel about quote unquote staff. So take this for what you will. I think we do need to acknowledge the possibility of a short term conversation. Yes, we've been doing this thing forever and a day. Yes, we've had. I think everyone's been replaced on the council since this whole thing began. But realistically, if a year from now, and again, I don't want any changes and I'm not a rezone guy. But I am a pragmatist. And so just throwing out that a possibility, it's always a possibility. My I won't say hope because that's ridiculous, but my vision is that it will be the way it is. And that how the D version of this plan actually goes back a lot closer to the initial premise of P A one or the Innovation Center. And that's on packet or packet page eighty one. You know, that it is supposed to be the foundation of a specific plan that generate or the specific plan for a next generation employment center with employee experience, health and collaboration. Then they start talking about residential. And lastly, with respect to the gentleman in mixed use, as I said before, I really feel sorry for him. I, you know, I am sorry for his parents passing. Yet this whole threat about developers, they don't want to come in, they don't want to do this, they don't want to do that. As long as we're Brentwood, we will have developers come in. So that isn't a worry of mine. And thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is David Main, followed by Carolina Villaseca. Mr. Main, go ahead.
Thank you. I guess it's timely to follow that. You know, it's it's one of those things where I'm just. There's a need for houses. I mean, there's a need even especially for density of houses. Right? That we can get done now. I mean, do you want to wait fifteen years to prioritize shopping over houses? Is that what this is really about? That you want to add more shopping to your, to the, to the area? Because we can't get that done the way you want to do it. If you want to do just shopping, I can do that. But right now, regardless of what that guy has to say. I don't got anybody who's, you know, we've been actively marketing. So, you know, that's the reality of the situation. We've talked with the city. They put their feelers out. Got nothing back. No interest. They say it doesn't pencil. The project doesn't pencil right now. So that's, you know, but what they can do is they can build houses, they can build homes, they can build apartments. They could make that transit village for the person who today needs to live in that sort of way. And you can still put shopping around it, but you know, you can't do it to that level because it doesn't pencil. And I think that's what, you know, Mr. Gail's trying to tell you. Is that there's not an interest, there's not an appetite for it. I think, I think you would get people. Especially you could do it in very cool ways, you know? You could have it be a, you know, like an Airbnb hotel. Using apartments. But today, the way you have the transit village, it doesn't pencil. If you can bring somebody to me, I'd be happy to talk to them. Thank you. You know, and you guys, you do do a lot of great things. Don't get me wrong. I just need your help on this. Let's work through it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. I think I may have accidentally lowered Carolina's, Carolina's hand. Let me go ahead. Carolina, go ahead.
Hi, thank you. Yes, I've been listening to all the comments. I've been, I think, to most of the meetings. And I'm glad that we're kind of in the home stretch. I agree. You have to have a long view for the amount of acreage and the type of projects that you're considering developing. And you, I agree with Karen that, you know, several acres for an entrance. We don't have anything like that in Brentwood and I'm not really sure why we would. That's a lot of maintenance also for the city of Brentwood to maintain that many acreage to an entrance of an area. And I strongly support Alternative D. And I think that once you start getting a nibble from one company who might want to come out here and build on P A one. You're going to start getting a lot more companies out here to build in P A one. You just have to have a little patience. As you all know, this is taking how many years projects take time. So I think if people in Brentwood know companies that are not in Brentwood. It might be worth a conversation like, hey, you know, reverse commute. We have the land. Do you want to build out here? Help out city staff, maybe find some companies that want to come out here. But yeah, I strongly support Alternative D as it goes back most to, most closely to the original premise. We are running out of land to build homes. Yes, we need homes. But we don't, we also need jobs because we're going to run out of land and we need that revenue stream for taxes in the city, or else I'm not sure how we're going to keep up the beautiful city that we have. So, Alternative D, thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Rod, followed by Cinziana. Rod, go ahead.
Thank you, Margaret. So, yeah, I I saw that Planning Commission when they, when they came up with this plan and they did a great job. I thought that they did a, a long, very considered discussion. They came up with ninety percent of max, which I think is a good valuation. I think that especially looking at the way the land is is laid out, there doesn't have to be a lot of wasted space. And I think that things being what they are with the state laws, that we won't have any trouble getting ninety percent of that land filled up with units. I think it'll be much more than that. Having looked around at what's going on in the state lately. I did hear one of the landowners commenting about needing to build housing first. And I just have to point out that there's a great deal of land available that is not transit village. That is just high-rise apartments. And I think that if if that's what has to be built first, that's, you know, that's, I guess, going to be what it's going to be. But, yeah, once those apartments go in and the shops start looking more attractive, because there's going to be a market right there. Then the transit village should be doable. And as others have noted, other, other communities are getting you know, mixed use development like this with the ground floor retail. My, my hope is that the the city council tonight will accept Alternative D substantially, at least to the point with with the calculation and tax, the ninety percent max of the of the residential calculation for H C D purposes. And I know that there's some details that will need to be gone over. But at the end of the, end of the night, you have a resolution in front of you, ready to sign. And I think if you don't make too many too many changes to the plan, I think that resolution is probably something that staff can modify on the fly and get you guys going tonight. So I certainly hope you do it. It's been a really long time. Really excited to see this project coming forward. I think this is the future of Brentwood. I'm not a big development guy. I don't like a lot of development, but you know, the city, we have no choice left. We, we've built houses and built houses and built houses and built houses. And that's been a mistake for the past twenty years and we all know that. I think everybody here knows that. We have no economic engine for Brentwood. We are desperate to have commercial revenue for when build out occurs. And we, we, we won't be able to live on housing development fees forever because we're running out of land and build houses. So we've got to have this. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Cinziana Todor, followed by Melina Maggiore. Cinziana, go ahead.
Thank you, Margaret. Good evening again, City Council. I am at the point to believe that dreams do come true. This project's been twenty years in the making and we're finally here. You have a very clear and straightforward decision to make tonight to vote for Alternative D. The reason being that it fulfills the promise of, of this area being an employment center as opposed to becoming, as some of the speakers tonight want, another housing project. So again, I encourage you to vote for Alternative D. It is maximizing the E C L I, as it was explained already. That creates the highest potential of good paying jobs, good local jobs for professionals that we already have living here in in Brentwood. So again, we need as many jobs as possible here locally and good companies that would generate a viable revenue stream for our budget in order to be able to further support in the future. Our city, all the community services that we need, our roads and safety services, our police department and so on. So obviously made, I'm sorry, Alternatively, it's the way to go. So I would appreciate you making that decision, not only based on what you've seen throughout the the really long meetings that you've all participated in and had great input to get to this point and have a very solid plan for Brentwood's future. But again, this is for all of us living here to create very good paying jobs. And whomever doesn't understand the land designations by now, that means they haven't paid attention to this project. And I'm really sorry to say, but learning on the job as a new city council member might not be an option at this crucial point in Brentwood's development. And also I would like to address the gentlemen's, I believe, was Mr. Main voicing that his opinion that we need more housing. That's all we have in Brentwood. I'm not really sure why he's not in touch with the reality on the ground. But if you ask any resident on the street today, and I've been talking to a lot of residents during my farmer's market presence during my campaign, everyone wants to stop housing development and focusing on economic development going forward. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Marina. Marina, go ahead.
Sorry, I had to unmute. Thank you. I've maintained from the very beginning that the additional residential was very much needed. And while it made sense to have commercial along the bypass. There are other areas outlined that need to be residential to support the existing commercial that exists in the area, such as the streets of Brentwood. And to say it's a twenty year plan and try to predict what the market will be in twenty years is not possible because the move will continue to be away from brick and mortar and not towards it. Housing is in demand. It'll always be in demand. And people bring money to the area and support a lot of vacant commercial that we already have. So it's good to have an alternative plan of the what if. And the people you need to talk to are the developers and the brokers and the brokers that Brentwood hired to promote the area. They're the people that know the reality of the numbers of whether this area can develop in the way that you envision it. And to expect everyone to be put on hold for twenty years is just simply not a reasonable expectation. So I again request that our property go back to being or remain the residential zoning that it is now and not commercial, given that it is surrounded by residential and directly north of Streets of Brentwood. I've requested that from the beginning and I'm making my last ditch effort tonight. Because that area logically should be residential. And had we put in a building permit already, it would be residential. But the area along the bypass that we we own, we have no problem having that retained as commercial. And we'll see what happens with it. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Jacob. Jacob, go ahead.
Thank you for that, Maggie. You know, back in nineteen fifty five, there was a council meeting almost like this back in Anaheim. Walt Disney decided to put Disneyland over there. There was also some other proposal at the same time to put track homes. And this was hundred and sixty acres. The rest is history. We know which part the city council took. And you guys have to be brave enough here to follow the path of B. B is for do it, you know? If we don't create jobs, you know, as someone said, that that all Brentwood is known is is for homes, you know? We build houses for Bay Area, you know? So people could, this is a sleeping place. This is a bed and breakfast, you know? Everyone comes in, walks outside. They commute back to the, back to the city. Now we have to, you know what, if we come back and and we have proposal that will attract businesses, they will come. You know, there is thousands of businesses. If you tell them, hey, we have land over here, come and build, they will come and build. You know, I don't see a reason why any of those companies, you know, will not come over here. Because, you know, they will generate income, they will generate jobs and everything. I mean, federal government has a, has the immigration plan where it's called E B five, where investors all over the world comes in and pitches in their money to to get projects like this done. And mixed use and employment and and job is the only way we should, we should take this city forward without creating jobs. You know what? Our future revenue and and our resources will be gone, you know? After, after we put thousands home, ten thousands home, fifty thousand, hundred thousand home, what what's going to happen? You know, I, I mean, we're going to strain our resources, our supplies and and everything. We're going to clog our, our roadways. We're not building our roadways, nothing at all. We have to create jobs. We have to keep the money over here. So I, I believe the city will make a wise choice tonight. And, you know, do what they did back in Anaheim in nineteen fifty five, you know? They had a choice choosing the track homes, they had a choice choosing Disney. And Disney invites more than twenty million people to city of Anaheim right now. Rest is history. The honest is on you guys and and I believe you guys are going to do the right thing tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Pat Tanesha Pearson. Pat Tanesha, go ahead.
Thank you again. I am, I think that both of the alternatives are great, but I would ask council to support Alternative D. I think it is great. And again, as some of the other people who have spoken tonight have stated, it supports more E C L I, which is big for me. It brings businesses like my own, affording us the opportunity to actually have our roots in the city of Brentwood in high quality facilities. And it allows some of our current businesses who want to grow and scale, as well as new businesses come into the city of Brentwood. So I wholeheartedly support Alternative D. And I know there's been a lot of discussion tonight about the mixed, mixed use and whether or not we'll get developers. I'm highly optimistic that people will come to Brentwood, just like they've come to other cities. So I don't think we operate in the, in the area of fear, however, in the area of optimism. And I appreciate our city staff by saying, hey, if we do have an issue, we'll come back to city council. I doubt that that's going to be necessary. I think there's a lot of interest and we just need to go out and search for them. So, you know, as other speakers stated, I'm excited. I'm thrilled that we're here and that we're just, we're picking our landscape. We're figuring out what we want to do in our, our great design. Thank you. Have a wonderful night.
Thank you. There's no addition. Thank you. There's no additional speakers with their hands raised.
Thank you. And then at this time, if there are no further speakers, could I get a motion to close the public hearing?
I moved. Second.
We have a first and a second.
Councilmember Mendoza?
Yes.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Rary?
I.
Vice Mayor Rodriguez?
I.
Mayor Bryant?
I.
Motion carries unanimous.
Okay, we'll move into council discussion. Member Mendoza?
I move we adopt a resolution adopting the addendum to the PA one specific plan and specific plan amendments twenty-two dash zero zero one using Alternative D as shown by staff this evening.
Second.
We have a first and a second roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Mendoza?
Yes.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Rary?
I.
Vice Mayor Rodriguez?
I.
Mayor Bryant?
I.
Motion carries unanimous.
I will now do B portion, correct? So I move we adopt the ordinance included in the agenda packet implementing specific plan amendment twenty-two dash zero zero one using Alternative D.
Second.
Have a first and a second roll call vote.
I'll read the ordinance title first.
Thank you.
An ordinance of the city council, the city of Brentwood, modifying Brentwood municipal code, chapter seventeen point two nine five, PA one, priority area one zone, and amending the zoning map of the Brentwood municipal code to incorporate SPA twenty-two dash zero zero one. Councilmember Mendoza?
Yes.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Rary?
I.
Vice Mayor Rodriguez?
I.
Mayor Bryant? Motion carries unanimous.
Okay. Councilmember Rary, your hand is still up? Is that? Okay, we'll move into item, business items, item D one. Yes.
I I just, I I need to take the time to thank the project manager on this project, Joshua Yuan, for all that he's done in the city manager's office of managing a planning project. There's been a variety of assistance from community members, the public, many consultants. But we would not be where we were this evening without the work of Josh. So thank you.
Thank you, Josh.
Thank you, Josh. And may you get a little peaceful rest this evening. I know that it's been rare through the this process. Item D one pertains to the sale of city-owned property. And Darren, Gail, and Josh, you will present the staff report.
Mayor, can we just take a five-minute break?
If that is pleasing to council, we can do that. Yes, we can. We will adjourn until eight forty-five.
Thank you.
Or recess till eight forty-five. At this time, we will reconvene. And we'll move into item D one, the sale of city-owned property. And Darren, I'll turn it to you, or Josh?
Great. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, councilmembers. We'd like to present a unique opportunity to have a discussion about what may be a great opportunity to do economic development, as well as look at some additional actions that support growth in the downtown. For your consideration, we would like feedback and direction regarding the Women's Club located at six forty-eight Second Street in downtown Brentwood. So six forty-eight Second Street, known as the Women's Club, is a city-owned property. It's a very small city-owned property. It's about eight hundred square foot in total building size and on a seventy-five hundred square foot standard lot in the downtown. Does have outdoor parking, as well as an outdoor potential area. Built circa about nineteen twenty-two, if not earlier, based on our best available records. It served as the first Brentwood library from nineteen twenty-two to nineteen seventy-nine, as well as the Women's Club from nineteen thirty-one to two thousand nine, with the city entering into a property purchase agreement with Contra Costa County in two thousand one. And the city's been the owner of that building for about twenty years so far. Included in the terms of the city-county agreement from two thousand one was a clause that we're currently reviewing and evaluating with Contra Costa County, which said that the property need to be used for a civic or governmental use. And if it wasn't available for such use, that the city at that time would pay the county eighty thousand dollars for future use of that property. As I mentioned, we're currently in discussions with Contra Costa County to get their feedback to see if they will release that claim in terms of a agreement to help us in the growth of our our downtown, as well as potential economic development. Here's some photos from the from the street looking eastward towards the Women's Club. Generally resembles a single family.
We don't see anything.
Sorry. Sorry about that. Mayor and councilmembers, how about now?
We can.
Great, thank you. So look, looking from the street on Second Street eastward, in the distance, you'll see Cap's Restaurant, which is privately owned. And then the city-owned Women's Club building does resemble a single-family home. And the interior doesn't really lend itself to be residential, but certainly could be converted if the council wanted to go that direction for the reuse of this property. This is a view of the back parking lot, which is currently being utilized by Contra Costa County through the library. We would address parking should the council want to move forward with the sale of this property or reuse in any way with the county in our partners there to to address that staff parking. This is the interior of the building, similar to a wood wood ship lat veneer on the interior. You can see it even has and resembles the original library context and and Women's Club. So this is the main entry, probably about two to three hundred square feet. There's a main meeting room that's open. All of it's an open concept of about maybe three hundred square feet. And then a rear service area, which has some older antiquated storage and kitchen service, as well as a single-use restroom that would probably need to be upgraded. Based on your direction earlier this year and at council level regarding the capital improvement program and future direction to consider and evaluate this property for future sale, we did go out and receive a commercial appraisal recently with a commercial or return value of four hundred thousand dollars as commercial value. Should the city retain this property, as previously disclosed in your budget workshop, we estimate it as a city public cost of about a hundred thousand, a hundred and eighty thousand dollars to do a full renovation of the building to do the capital replacement, upgrade the systems and make it available for public or city use. Since that time, we have review with all of our city departments that there is no need to retain the Women's Club as a city-provided service building. And the city council at your full direction may designate the property as surplus. If you do decide to designate the property as surplus, we do need to be consistent with state law and the Surplus Lands Act, which is very similar process to what we did with the tech center. With some other nuances, this property is fully, has to be fully compliant with the disposition law, which is outlined in your staff report. We would return to you with your direction to surplus at the next future meeting to give you more potential steps, as well as a full surplus action that would be consistent with State Lands Act process. In terms of looking at the Women's Club as a potential historic building, there's nothing in the city ordinances, city guidelines, city specific guidelines or building inventory that says that this is a historic building that must be retained for historic purposes. And nowhere in county records, state of California records, or the National Register of Historic Places is this building listed. So we did do additional research. We have general plan policy that give us guidance and give council guidance relating to conservation in open space and historic structures and trying to keep the character of of historic structures and buildings, as well as the two thousand five downtown specific plan and EIR provided some guidance on historic buildings that was outlined in your report. We also have a internal historic building survey dated August of two thousand seven that lists the Women's Club of historical character, but also not necessarily listed on a on a local inventory, county inventory, or state or federal inventory. So buildings of a historical context or character can be both privately or publicly owned. They can be reactivated, reused, revitalized, and still retain their historic character. Some may be listed on a register, some may not may not be. Just really depends on what the user and owner of that building see as their ultimate requirement to be able to to redevelop that that property and put it to private or public use. The city council can provide direction that any future surplus action, whether that's to issue an RFP for redevelopment or reactivation of the property, could request to maintain the original integrity of the building and that the goal in potentially declaring the property as surplus and seeking private re, private redevelopment would be to encourage reinvestment and reactivation of the building. Councilmember Rary?
I didn't counsel them. Mendoza, her hand up first. I had my, I was thinking about putting my hand up, but I think we should put it up first.
I just have a question. If we put it on the market, I know you said four hundred thousand if it's commercial, but what if someone wants to come buy it for to build homes on? Can we, can we sell it with a restriction? Or I don't think we can, can we?
Sure. So that is for for the Surplus Lands Act, we need to enter into good faith negotiations with all those entities that are covered by the the Lands Act, whether they're residential developers or designated entities, public, public organizations, government, that sort of thing. So we have to give them the opportunity and then we would bring their proposal and and provide that to you as a full council in reviewing their proposal, as well as possibly entering into good faith negotiations to meet your goals and objectives of the building. You you are, as a city council, the the, it's a city-owned building, so you have full discretion on how you would really convey this property to a future use. You just have to follow the State Lands Act, as well as negotiating good faith.
Okay, thank you.
At the last, when you brought this to us before, and you said that it was gonna cost a hundred and eighty thousand dollars if we were going to bring it, to restore it. So it's eight hundred square feet and or around eight hundred square feet. And and I'm gonna ask the question again, because I, we didn't have an answer last time. What costs a hundred and eighty thousand dollars for an eight hundred square foot house?
It it's a great question. There's a lot of unknowns. It's a nineteen twenties building. It depends after we do a full evaluation, if we wanted to put it to public city use and allow public access, we'd have to make sure it's up to current code, as well as be maintainable. So that investment would be something that helps the city in refraining its costs long term and be part of a long-term capital plan. In terms of actual items, we'd have to evaluate that with an architect and engineer. What we had done through Public Works, as well as the city manager's office, is work with a general contractor to just generally identify items. So that would be like all of your systems repairs, that restroom, that kitchen area, making sure that the foundation is.
What what's it, what system? You said system repair. What system repair?
Sure. So we need to make sure if if we want to use it as a city building, we wanted to anticipate the cost of potentially electrical, HVAC, possibly windows replacement. I mean, there could be a whole gamut, but we'd have to have an architect or engineer engaged, and that's included in the price as well.
And and that was the price that the contractor gave you?
As a rough, rough order of magnitude or an ROM cost that we provided along with Public Works.
And and we would have to go out to bid on that, correct?
Possibly, if the city wanted to retain it as a city building.
I I I know that in, we identified wanting to have a tourism office in in the city. And, you know, possibly, I think at that time, we even talked about downtown, the downtown Brentwood Coalition, combining that along with with the tourism and I do you know where we've gone with that and and why we're not considering this building for it?
We certainly could with council direction. If if you wanted to pursue a public-private partnership or even the city retaining it, ultimately, we wanted to come back with some facts based on that discussion three or four months ago. And I, I believe, you know, it, we could certainly engage with other parties to see what their level of interest is. I think what we're seeking from the council is, do you want to be the owners of this property? And if you don't, do you want to surplus it and allow some type of public-private partnership or a private developer to come in and, and take over the property?
Yeah. And um, what, what, what did entail for us to uh, to actually make this a historic building?
So we're not prepared to, to fully go through that. It depends on what level of historic designation we'd want. Uh, we, as we don't have a, a local ordinance or historic preservation board, that would probably be something to consider first. And that would probably be a larger effort out in the city side. So we need your direction based on staff time and, and, and potential future actions and resources. Um, and then we could pursue it up, up the chain from there, whether it's being on the county, the state, or, or the federal. At the end of the day, there's going to be costs, there's going to be time. And, and what outcome does the city council want to see for this building or, or for the downtown?
Would we be able to use East Contra Costa Historical Society for that?
We can certainly engage with them.
Okay, thanks.
Councilmember Meyer.
Thank you. Um, thanks, Josh. Can you clarify what circumstances would trigger the eighty thousand dollar payment back to the county?
Sure. Uh, so the agreement terms, which we think we will be hopefully able to negotiate with the county, say that the building has to be for civic or governmental public purposes. Uh, and if they're not, then we have to repay the eighty thousand dollars. And so we're asking county real estate to work that through county council and provide us direction on what their level of agreement would be. We know that as a city, we provided millions and millions of dollars historically in creating a beautiful downtown as well as uh providing public parking as well as county library. What that original agreement was tied to was the County Health Center in downtown Brentwood, which has since relocated to the East County Service Center on Sand Creek.
Thank you. Um, and that kind of is uh almost contradictory to the surplus land act and that usage, but per that, what reasonable uses for that size of a lot?
Sure. Uh, we're not exactly too sure. Uh, at this point, we'd have to go out to the market and see what bears fruit. The appraisal did list, this could be, for, for example, lawyer's office, a dental office, something similar to that. Uh, if the council wanted to have some clear direction on the uses that they'd like to see there, we could certainly convey that to any prospective buyer. Uh, but it may be good to cast a wide net and see who responds if you're interested in having a, a commercial RFP go out to the public.
Okay, thank you.
Great.
Josh, I did have one question. Uh, would the uh prohibition of putting a gas station or car wash that applied to this particular location?
I, I would, I would, I would probably say yes, the downtown specific plan would uh provide guidance in terms of land use. Uh, and right now, the, the land use is more of a residential use that was outlined in your report. And if you wanted to, you could work with a, with a developer down the line to do a, a rezone um or, or uh the specific plan amendment to make that more commercially viable. It just depends on the level of response and, and what the council's goals and vision are for this property.
I appreciate that answer. I really was asking the question specifically so that some concerned community uh residents would understand that there are some very um clear uh limitations as to what can actually be done with that. So some of the fears along those lines uh can be assuaged at this point in the conversation.
But, thank you, sir. Uh, so just to wrap through a couple of exercises here, fiscal impact, we, as mentioned, we have an appraised value of four hundred thousand dollars. Uh, we would anticipate that as potential revenue, but we'll have to see what the market bears and what uh is available. Uh, net proceeds based on the county agreement would be about roughly three hundred twenty thousand dollars if we decided to go out to the market and we find a buyer at our appraised value. So recommended actions tonight, uh, we are seeking your direction for the future of that building, whether or not that will be, continue to be a city-owned building. And whether or not the council will consider directing staff to return to you with any of the following actions. One would be declaring the property a surplus at a future meeting date as well as directing the city manager or their designated to return with additional actions consistent with the state state surplus land act and uh an RFP or solicitation for the property to be purchased by an outside party. Um, third part, you know, a, a three P arrangement with potentially an outside organization or whatever that may be. And that concludes my report. Thank you.
But it's Mayor Rodri.
Thank you, Mayor. Sorry about that. Uh, I really liked the idea that um council member, I mean, uh, Rary brought up um in regards to tourism. Uh, I don't know if it's a tourism or information building. Um, would be great to maybe explore and see if that's a possibility. Uh, it's really sad, right? Hard to get rid of old buildings like that that bring a lot of history to, you know, residents that have been here for a long time. I mean, I walked in front of that school since, I think, third grade, while we had to go to high school. So I mean, I think it has a lot of value in the history. I mean, obviously, we don't have a choice, I understand. But I really liked the um, the idea that I think Councilmember Rary was uh going to in regards to a tourism slash maybe informational building when it comes to things that we do here in Brentwood historically, history, but also currently, like um, we do have a lot of the cherry pick, we have a lot of events where people could actually stop by and get information in regards to some of the things that we have going on. So I really like that idea. It's something we could explore. I mean, it's just to see what it would look like possibly. Um, that would be nice.
Do we want to do public comment before we get into discussion? Because that's a little bit more discussion. We can't hear you, Mayor.
Thank you. If there are no more qualifying, clarifying questions of staff at this time, then we will open public comment. Uh, Margaret?
I received no written public comments on this item. If you wish to speak on this item, please raise your hand using the Zoom feature and I'll call your name if provided. And then mute you to speak. Remarks are limited to three minutes per person and your microphone will be muted after the timer has expired. I do have two hands raised. I'll go ahead and share the timer screen. And I'll call on Carolina Villaseca, followed by Amy Tilly. Carolina, go ahead.
Thank you. Yeah, um, I love that house. There, uh, we took our kids on a walking field trip of historical houses in um, in downtown uh when they were in elementary school and it was really cool to come off that house and be like, oh, this was the women's club. And the kids were like, ooh, I didn't know women had a club. Yes, they did. And there it is. Um, so here's an idea. Because when we had the Grand Fiesta by the Chamber, I stumbled upon that by accident because I was coming to downtown to do something else. Um, I found out about the Diwali Festival because one of the organizers is my neighbor who lives up, up across the street. And if I didn't know her, I would know that Brentwood is having a Diwali Festival. Um, Oktoberfest, I found out because there was a gentleman handing out cards for Oktoberfest. Um, we do not have a good place to parse out all of these events and information that is going on. Uh, the Chamber said Facebook and I said, do you understand how the algorithm works unless I'm liking your stuff every day all the time, you don't show up in my newsfeed. You have to like actively go out and seek information. If you don't know what you don't know, you'll never find it. So if we're going to use this house for tourism, which sounds great, then the person or the people, whoever is in charge of the information needs to be like the keeper of all the information of everything going on in Brentwood so that we know like when homecoming is at the high schools, when the schools are having their, I don't know, their lobster feed, when is Diwali? Uh, when are the, you know, all the different events going on in Brentwood? If there could be one place where people could go and find that, that would be so awesome. Um, I would love that idea. I would love that idea. Um, I, I hope we can keep the house and um that's, that's my two cents. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Amy Tilly. Amy, go ahead.
Guys, um, I'm so glad you guys brought this up. I'm, uh, I know I came on board December of last year and part of the MOU for my position um was, was a requirement and really a important piece was really creating um a hub for tourism and bringing all these things together, all the things you guys have all been saying just now. And um, so I was, um, when I found out about that space earlier in the year, I was really excited about it. Um, and I did do a walkthrough and my eyes just lit up. I thought this is it. This is the place to do all the things that you all are saying right now. Um, and um, so I have been kind of putting some plans together for that. I'd love the opportunity for downtown Brentwood Coalition to be able to, to run that and um coordinate that and have, have a place, have a hub for all these things that encourages tourism and just um that the public can go to to find information about stuff because I think we are a really pretty good hub for, for information and like what's going on. I think everything tends to kind of flow this, this way. Um, and I did reach out to um with Main Street. Um, they have a lot of resources available there. And so they put me in touch with like the, these different national preservation, uh, historical preservation groups. And um, so we've been talking about that um just recently about how we can do that because we do want to keep the historical. Um, uh, we, we do want to keep it a historical place and, and really get it designated that way. And that's something that, that I feel confident that we could get done. Uh, and I'd like to work with the East County Historical Society on that and have you know, just cool historical things about um downtown in the city that people could pop in and see. And so um, you know, I just would love you guys to consider um that we, we are very interested in doing that. And so if there's a way to, you know, for us to buy it or lease it, um, we're ready, we're ready to start work on it. We're ready to get it set up, like we're ready. And we really would like the opportunity to do that. So thank you guys for um just hearing me out on that. And um, I'd be happy to answer any questions or provide just more background and what, what I kind of could envision that place being. So, thank you.
Thank you. I have no additional hands raised.
At this time, then we will close public comment, move into council discussion. Councilmember Ray.
Um, yeah, I just pulled up our economic development um strategy or strategic action plan, which we adopted back in March two thousand eighteen. And this was supposed to be um an actual action plan where not to sit on the shelf. That we are supposed to do the things that, that were in this. And the third thing listed, um, uh, you know, for the short to long term, depending on funny bell, the key actions include creating a visitors and tourism bureau. And um you know, part of that, I, I, you know, I would love to see the city create that or look into um making this a historical or even doing a historical neighborhood. I mean, all those homes have some history with the founding residents of this community, the pioneers of this community. I know Barbara Bonnixson's house, just a couple of doors down on the other side of the street. Um, that was the house that she's lived in almost her entire life. The, the one across the street from her had burned down. That was where they had lived originally, but they farmed this area. Um, she was the nurse at the school for, over at Liberty forever. So these are something I think we should be looking into establishing an historical neighborhood, which brings people out to learn about it. People like to go into, uh, you know, they see something on the historical site and they want to go and they want to check it out, walk the neighborhood. Um, learn a little bit about it and then they, they go to our restaurants and our, our retail in the downtown area, which will again help the downtown area. So I, I, I think we're really missing it if we, if we're considering selling this. I mean, with the hundred and eighty thousand dollars that they have, which I, I still think is a little high, but because we are the city and, and we always had to pay more for things. Um, unfortunately, but in reality, it's only a hundred thousand because we then don't have to pay the state or the, the county that eighty thousand. Um, so in reality, you know, it's really only a hundred thousand for us. I, I know it's a hundred and eighty, but if we sold it, we'd lose that eighty thousand. So that's my two cents.
So member Minda.
Um, I agree. I don't think at this point we should be selling it. I think we need to explore what it's going to cost to refurbish it. I agree, it needs to be a historical site. I think we should maybe look at a partnership with the downtown Brentwood Coalition and someone from the city, just because I mean, Amy's awesome and she has a huge area, but we also have other areas, right? We're going to have P A one. We're going, we have the streets of Brentwood. We have a lot, you know, the Lone Tree Shopping Center corridor. So um, I think it'd be a great partnership with them and it'd be a great spot for them to be in. I mean, we, she needs a desk somewhere and she needs a hub somewhere. But um, I, I agree. I think that there has to be a way to find the budget money next year to, to bring this up to code and move forward on it. And and, and like, you know, Carolina Viasseca was saying, I mean, it, it'd be a great place for people to go find out what's going on, maybe have like an information board or something outside. We all go to hotels or we all go to like city halls where they have all the tourist pamphlets on them. So you know, our farmers could actually put out tourist pamphlets with information. Um, we could put out, you know, the, the U-PIC maps, all of that good stuff could all be there. So um, yeah, all of that, like the John Marsh House, like all of that, even L M C. I mean, L M C, sometimes people, people don't even know we have a satellite um junior college out here. So it's just all, I'd be, I think it'd be great. I don't think we should sell at this point. Um, you know, sometimes it's great to sell, you know, the tech centers, it's going to be awesome, but I think this one we need to hold on to. And I think we could get a lot of benefit from maybe not financially, but just quality of life for our residents and for our visitors.
Councilmember Meyer.
Yeah, uh, and this is something we discussed a while ago and, and I think everyone was sort of feeling the, the love for the idea then too. And I think um, just like I, I could quote both council members because I was going to repeat almost exactly what they were saying. I mean, Harvest Time and, and John Marsh. And I mean, I think the, the idea of resources and events, and I think um there could be a section that has, for example, nonprofit resource uh flyers and, and marketing materials. So I think the idea of this being a hub, but I also do like the idea of it being a partnership. Because while it's, it would be located downtown and it would have a, certainly a focus of downtown, it wouldn't necessarily stop downtown. We could expand that into um advertising other events outside of downtown and supporting other businesses outside of downtown. Um, if it was in, in more in a partnership kind of situation. We talked at one point about like a QR code tour of the downtown buildings or some of the historic buildings in other parts of the city. I think this has the potential for a lot of, of marketing and tourism and bringing all of the different resources and amenities of the city into one hub. Um, and I think I just love the idea. So yeah, in support. Thanks.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Rodriguez.
Yeah, I guess I shared my piece a little bit early last time, but I uh, I agree with uh Councilmember uh Rary in regards to what she had said earlier. So I think it's a great opportunity. I think it's something we should explore and um, see what that possibly will look like. So, thank you.
I, I'll make a motion to move forward with um, looking into restoring this house and um, and then bring it back to council also. Uh, within that, I'd also like them to um see about moving this into a historical um home.
I'll second that.
Or, or, or even a historical neighborhood down there because I mean, some of those homes were.
Um, Damian's up.
Another location.
If I can just jump in for a second, the, the agenda description tonight really talks about whether you want to surplus and sell the property and it doesn't go into a lot of flexibility on specific um options for what you might want to do with it if you don't want to surplus and sell it. So I, I, I'm a little concerned, Councilmember Rary, your motion's going a bit beyond what the agenda description is. Certainly, I think it's appropriate to move um the, 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 the council could move that they don't want to sell the property at this, at this time. I would like staff to come back um at a future meeting with some options based on um some of the matters that were discussed by council tonight. And I know that doesn't get you exactly where you want to be, but I'm also concerned just how the agenda description is currently written. The focus really was on the surplus and sale.
I, I thought the, one of the things that Josh had up there in, in was to move on historical and restoration.
I, I know that was Mr. Ewan's um report, but I'm, I'm looking at what the public would have seen if they read the agenda. And it really was focused on the surplus and sale. I think you can get where you want to go. It just might not be as specific as you would, you'd probably like tonight.
Okay, so what, what motion would you suggest?
I, I think it'd be appropriate to move that, that the council um would move. would move not to proceed with selling the property at this time.
And to look into and to look into other things.
And to and to have staff return to the council with other options for the property.
Okay.
And I and certainly staff has heard you on that and understand some of the concerns that council has and what they may may like to see there and what they wouldn't want to see there.
Okay, so move.
Second that.
If I can ask the Assistant City Manager if if that motion, if he has any questions about that motion before they take the vote.
So just just to clarify, then that means that at a future time, the city council would be investing money to fix up the property versus selling it to someone else to make those improvements.
Yes.
Perfect. And so, yep, I'm 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 clear. Thank you, Damian.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Rary.
We have a first and second.
Okay.
We'll call vote, please.
Councilmember Mendoza.
Yes.
Councilmember Meyer.
Yes.
Councilmember Rary.
I.
Vice Mayor Rodriguez.
Hi.
Mayor Bryant.
Hi.
Motion carries unanimous.
Okay, thank you. We are moving into item D two. It pertains to updating the city council's ethics and conduct policy. And Damian Brower, our city attorney, will present the staff report. Damian.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, this item responds to the council's direction of September twenty seventh to amend your ethics and conduct policy. Specifically, the amendment will permit the discussion of alleged policy violations, city policy violations by the city council. When following the current policy, current policies process could result in a majority of the council discussing allegation outside of a notice meeting. By way of a very brief background, the policy currently requires council member who alleges a city policy violation by one of their colleagues to first talk with the mayor, the vice mayor, or the most senior council member, depending on who the allegation is against. This allows the council member with the concern to run it by someone in a leadership position or with seniority who's not involved in the allegation and get another take on the issue so they're not bringing it forward in the in a vacuum. But in an instance where a council member first talks with another council member about the alleged violation, then the Brown Act would likely prevent the current policy from being implemented as written. And so it's really because the Brown Act doesn't allow three of you to to talk about an issue because it would be a majority of the council outside of a notice meeting. And here, if if the scenario unfolded that way, after talking with one council member, the council were making the allegation, couldn't then talk with the person designated by the policy to hear that because you then have three council members talking about that outside of a notice by a notice meeting, potentially violating the Brown Act. So this draft amendment, it allows, I believe it resolves that Brown Act concern. It allows a council member who previously may have previously discussed an allegation with another council member to contact the city manager, let's him contact the city manager about the allegation, have it placed on the agenda. Instead of having to first contact the mayor or the vice mayor or the senior council member as as applicable as a current policy requires. And that concludes my report. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Are there any clarifying questions of staff at this time?
I have one just clarifying question.
True.
So a regular person speak. I find out about something. I go to the person I feel most comfortable with and talk to them about it. After I bounce the, you know, the situation off of them, I can then go to the city manager and put it on. And then that city manager will talk to the person the allegations against and put it on the agenda.
The 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 policy would permit that. It would, I think it really does hope that you talk with the person the policy sets forth that you should be talking about with. But if that doesn't occur, it would still allow you to go to the city manager and ask them, ask the item to be placed on the agenda.
Perfect. Thank you.
Any further clarifying questions? Seeing none at this time, then we will open public comment. Mark.
I received one written public comment on this item. I'll go ahead and share my screen. Full copies of the comment will be made available on the city council agenda's webpage. If you wish to speak on this item, please raise your hand using the Zoom feature. I'll call your name if provided. Remarks are limited and then meet you to speak. Remarks are limited to three minutes per person and your microphone will be muted after the timer has expired. I do have two hands raised. I'll call on Rod, followed by Carolina. Rod, go ahead.
Yes, thank you. Yeah, this this is something that has to be done. And I've spent a lot of time in the last few years looking into the Brown Act, understanding the Brown Act, pondering the Brown Act. It's a it's a flawed act, but I understand the purpose of it. And so I have kind of a love hate relationship with the Brown Act, but I do understand it. And the existing policy, as I commented before, creates a Brown Act trap. And you don't have to go very far to see it. All you have to do is imagine that three council members are in the same place and one of them does something that's a violation of that lengthy list of policies in front of the other two. At that point, they're both witnesses. They see it. Even if they don't speak verbally, they've both seen it. It would. It the way Brown Acts can be interpreted, at that point, they have made some kind of a communication. And I mean, even if what they just said is, well, which one of us should go talk to the mayor, you know? Boom. You're done. You're dead. So I get the intent of the policy and like the Brown Act itself, the intent is good, but the the policy creates a situation that's not tenable. And so I I would encourage the council to adopt this first step. And I do, I do believe that the the policies do need a a look to, and I see that is coming up later in the agenda as a future agenda item, so I won't go into that. But I I just think that the 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 most important thing that this policy does is it is it creates a way for the city council to recognize inappropriate actions taken by a council member and to police itself. And that's a very important function for anybody. And the city council is no exception. So I think that this has to be done in order to allow reporting to occur in in a manner that's fair to the person being reported in a manner that's respectful of the Brown Act. But it has to be able to occur occur and you can't really go around blaming somebody for not following a policy that's not possible to follow. So, yeah, I I urge you to support this measure. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Carolina Villaseca. Carolina, go ahead.
Thank you. Yeah, I'd like to say thank you to Damian for clarifying. Because city council needs flexibility when having these issues arise in the future. We have no guarantee of who's going to be where or when, and if you happen to get let's say a mayor and vice mayor who don't get along with the other three council members or something happens, let's say two council members don't get along with the other council member. The the opportunities are infinite for what could happen with relationships on city council. So the city council members need to have flexibility on how to address these issues as they arise. And having only one process set guarantees that things will not get taken care of in a timely manner. So amending the process is very wise and will give future city councils the ability to take care of their own house without having to go outside the house. So, yeah, no, I think this is very good. Thank you.
Thank you. I have no additional speakers with their hands raised.
Hey, at this time, we will close public comments and move into council discussion. Councilmember Rary.
You know, I heard some people in the public at the last meeting saying that I violated city policy by not following the city council meeting rules and procedures. I find that pretty amusing. Especially considering that we are trying to bring to light a serious matter. But I stopped due to a procedural error, not a city policy violation. Under the Brown Act, I'm able to speak to one and only one council member about a subject involving the city. Because of that, no violation has taken place. I spoke with one council member. When you start, when you start off going to the city attorney, sharing the information that you have that's very serious, you would expect that direction is given to to go to the mayor with your concern per city council meeting rules and procedures, but are not. And frustrated and being the journalist that I am, I scoured the city's website looking for documentation of the procedure to move forward. And I couldn't find anything. And that was using both the city's search engine and sifting through the Brentwood Municipal Code. It it was a very long day in searching for these things. When you're approached by another council member who is also frustrated that they were stopped dead in their tracks after taking a very troubling concern to the city attorney. You you do the only thing that you think is available to you, and that is for two council members to request for an item to be heard by the council. And for those of you who are not familiar with how an agenda item is placed on the agenda by a council member, council members can either request an item to be placed on the agenda during the future agenda item section of a council meeting, or two council members can submit a request to the city manager that the item be placed on the next agenda. And it was only during that request that we were informed by the city manager of the procedural error in moving the item requested forward. It is also said that with said by the public that we're bending the rules to fit our needs. Really an interesting point, considering the count, the council meeting rules and procedures slash administration policy attached with the staff report for this item has been amended at or revised nineteen times over the past twenty one years. That's almost once a year. It it's been said that this procedure was instituted to prevent unfounded claims about a council member from moving forward to the public meeting. Hmm. That's very interesting, considering that even if the mayor decides that the claim doesn't have merit, if we had been advised to go to the mayor, the council member presenting the claim can place the item it's go to the city manager and have the item placed on the agenda to be heard by the rest of the council and the public. Since the item can still be heard by the rest of the council in a public meeting, despite the mayor's decision, the question I have is why are we then being held up from agendizing a censure, reprimand, or admonition if two council members have concerns? Moving forward with an admission, reprimand, or censure of a council member should not be precluded due to a procedural error. And I make a motion to amend the policy as detailed in red in the staff report.
I second that.
Is there any further discussion before we?
I just want to say, I I agree with Councilmember Rary. I think this policy, you'll get to where you need to get to, but it slow walks it, right? And I think that a lot of our policies slow walk stuff. So then you're like, forget it, I'm done. And I think that this policy will hold us and future account councils accountable in a quicker fashion and just cut to the chase and take care of any issues that we're seeing. Because we could have taken care of these things months ago, some of them. So that's why I second it. I agree with it. If we it'll just make it happen faster instead of slow walking.
Okay, we have a first and a second. We'll call vote, please.
Councilmember Mendoza.
Yes.
Councilmember Meyer.
Yes.
Councilmember Rary.
I.
Vice Mayor Rodriguez.
I.
Mayor Bryant.
I.
Motion carries unanimous.
We will now move into requests for future agenda items. Item E one. Are there any current new future agenda item requests this time?
Well, I have E, oh, no, I'm E two.
We're we're here right now.
Oh, sorry.
That's okay. Item E two point one.
Yes.
A future agenda item request from Councilmember Mendoza related to amendments to the ethics and conduct policy. Councilmember Mendoza.
I think we need to review this whole entire policy. I think that some things are outdated. And also, I think that we talk about the Brown Act all the time. And we've seen Brown Act violations and we don't do anything about it as as a body at all. So I would like staff to research if we can update the policy where we could hold each other accountable for Brown Act violations. If we find there's a Brown Act violation, the city then forwards it to the district attorney's office. Also, any kind of law that might be broken, we should be talking about that. We don't, I don't want to sit next to someone who I think broke the law and act like nothing happened. I think we need to discuss those things and our city needs to hear if there's concerns also. And if nothing happened at the end, then nothing happened at the end, but at least we have the discussion and we get the information out there. So I think we need to do that. I think it creates a safer place for all of us. I think it's always safer when things are out in public versus things happening behind closed doors. But I think this, it's from twenty fourteen. So I think we need a whole new update. I think we need to read it. I don't know if we need like kind, you know, we all read it and we decide what parts we want to update. I think we can talk about that at the next meeting. But I definitely want to research if we can include Brown Act violations and any kind of law breaking situations. I mean, if you're telling me to call the police, that's probably something that we should talk about during a council meeting, right? Like to me, that's a basic. So I'm I'm hoping that we can revamp that and modernize it in a way that makes everyone feel safe.
At this time, then we will open public comments and turn to you, Margaret.
I received no written public comments on this item. If you wish to speak on this item, please raise your hand using the Zoom feature. I'll call your name if provided and I meet you to speak. Remarks are limited to three minutes per person and your microphone will be muted after the timer has expired. I do have one hand raised. I'll go ahead and share the timer. And I'll call on Rod. Rod, go ahead.
Yes, thank you. Yeah, I I did take some time to to look through the list of transgressions and the the procedures a little bit. And it does seem to me there it's fairly comprehensive. But I I think it just needs to be crystal clear. No violation of the law should be something that you can't talk about amongst yourselves. I mean, even even something as scandalous as what just happened in LA where the city council was caught on tape making racist comments about another member's child. I just don't, I just don't think that there is anything that should be excluded. You know, something that that's a violation of the law sure surely should not be excluded. And the Brown Act in particular is something that really, in terms of fairness to the public, I have to say that when I, when I read up on the Brown Act, it was just a few years ago. I imagine this is still true. No one has ever been successfully prosecuted under the Brown Act. And the reason is simple. Nobody prosecutes anybody under the Brown Act. The Brown Act is for the way it's implemented. It it makes it possible for developers to sue cities. That's basically the 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 primary mechanism of the Brown Act. But the fact is, you know, if somebody commits a Brown Act violation that's in favor of of a development, they're probably not going to suffer any consequence whatsoever. And that's and that's a brutal injustice to ours, to our citizenry. I think the Brown Act gets violated all the time. It's routine. The things I read about the 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 daisy chain conversations that go through the developers that come and sit in. conversations that go through the developers that come and sit in, in many of your offices. And I applaud the council members we have right now that, that don't follow that practice of having private meetings with developers because of this very reason is because it's corrupt. But, uh, the Brown Act should protect the citizens the same way it protects the developers. And I don't think that there's any mechanism for it. And I think the city of Brentwood has one laid in front of it right now. And I, I would love to see this included as something that you guys could discuss amongst yourselves when you see it happening. Because frankly, no one else will. And the public has every right to see justice done. Thank you.
Thank you. I have no additional hands raised.
Thank you. At this time then, we will close public comments. And
Margaret, there wa, there is a hand raised.
Oh. Okay, I see it now. Yes.
When we will reopen public comments then.
Brayden, go ahead.
Well, thank you, uh, Margaret. I just wanted to say real quick, um, you know, thank you for addressing the whole issue, um, and not being antioch. Um, you know, it's, the document's clear, you know, it's not, not, not the staff's fault that, you know, you guys couldn't find it or couldn't read it. Um, and you're making it out to be something that it's not. Um, so yes, so, so I, all I'm going to say is thank you for addressing it, uh, not being antioch and Brown Act.
Thank you. I have one additional hand raised. Carolina, go ahead.
Um, ah, when people use that phrase, we don't want to be antioch, it is a dog whistle. It should never be used in that way. We are not antioch. Antioch is not Brentwood. We're two different cities. We have two different city councils. We have different issues, but we live side by side. People in Brentwood shop in Antioch all the time. And people in Antioch come and shop in Brentwood all the time. When objectives, when Antioch has an objective, which is something that Brentwood can then piggyback on, we absolutely jump on board, like the oil and gas ban. Antioch led the way and we followed suit. Sometimes it's Brentwood leading the way and Antioch follows suit. So what I love, would like to tell this young man who's running for city council, please stop using that phrase. You're showing your colors. Thank you.
Thank you. I have no additional hands raised.
This time we'll close public comments. Um, are there any further comments or discussion from council? Uh, Vice Mayor Rodriguez?
Yeah, no, I think it's great that we review the policies and, uh, in regards to ethics and conducts. Um, but I know historically these things have been done with an ad hoc committee. I think it's a little bit biased if we as a council are doing it when it's going to be a reflection either on us or for future council members. I think that, you know, create a, a, an ad hoc committee. I know that's what they did. I think in two thousand fourteen, um, it took quite some time. It looked like it took about eighteen months to put this together and it may not take that long because there's already a template put together. But I think it's important that we involve portion, people that don't sit on the council to help create this because if not, once again, um, yeah, it just doesn't seem right, um, either for current council members or for future council members. So I would really, you know, hopefully we could consider looking at in the future or within the next meeting or so, um, an ad hoc committee that could actually go through this and go, you know, obviously have council members on the ad hoc committee, but actually have others go through it with them and, um, review the, the policies.
Thank you. Uh, Councilmember Meyer?
Thank you. Uh, I definitely support the revision and update. I think, um, eight years is a very long time for us to um, assume everything is still what it was back then. Um, a lot of things have changed and I'm not just even talking about, uh, the interpretation of Brown Act. I'm talking about the interpretation, interpretation of, of conduct, for example. Um, but I would like to ask Councilmember Mendoza what her vision of this was as far as how the revisions would be made, how they could be implemented, that kind of thing.
I almost think we should go through it. Um, again, an ad hoc committee, we are, you know, we have ad hoc committees and, you know, we wasted a hundred grand on one earlier last year, but it's slow walking. So I don't want to do an ad hoc committee. That's what people do when they want to slow walk stuff sometimes, I feel like. And this is one of those cases. Um, I think we are, we welcome public comment like no one else has. I think we put it on the agenda. We make it clear. I mean, we communicate with our constituents all the time. If there's any changes in this policy you want to make, bring it forward. We're already taking care of the, the big one, which was how do we get something to the agenda, right? We took care of that tonight, earlier tonight. The next one is, you know, everyone talks about the Brown Act, but we don't hold each other accountable for the Brown Act. You know, it's, or anything else. So I just want to see us talk about it in public. Like if, if I know a Brown Act violation and I talk to you about it like, hey, Susanna, this is what happened. And you're like, shoot, I saw that same thing happen too. Then we should, if you and I are talking about it, we all five of us should talk about it. We should get to the bottom of it and the public should know, right? Like what happened? Were we wrong in our assumption? And if we were wrong in our assumption, how do we make sure we don't make those mistakes again? Even if it's me, someone said, I'd say Hobbita broke the Brown Act violation and I could say, well, shoot, I didn't know that or whatever. So it's not only, it's not just a way of chastising someone, right? It's also a way of doing on the job training. It's like, okay, this is what transpired. It wasn't supposed to happen. So I just, those are the big two parts for me, which I don't think I need to, I don't need a committee for. I don't need to spend a lot of time, huh?
I have a workshop.
Yeah, we could do a one night workshop, just one night, couple hours. Anyone who's interested could come in. We'll talk about it and go from there. But it's, you know, I don't know. It's, it's just, that's what I was looking at. I'm, I haven't raised my hand yet, but you know, I have other comments too. Does that make sense?
Yeah, it makes sense. And I think actually the, the workshop idea would be a very, a quick vehicle for getting any changes implemented. But your, your thought then would be in that case that we would all just go over, uh, um, the current policy with a fine tooth comb and come prepared with suggestions for redlining.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yeah. Um, and I know someone's going to say like, I'm chastising Brayden and I'm, you know, doing this and that, but I appreciate you coming on and making the comments you made tonight. But, um, you also made some very disparaging comments in your questions to staff that I've read. So I hope that by you watching and listening, you understand if I wasn't breaking it, you know, any policies. And now you know, Karen, who was the other person, we followed the rules. So I think that before you chastise us in public comments or, you know, to other people or during a forum, you would have the grace to at least figure out exactly what's going on because that's what I try to do. And, um, you know, research is really big to me and I, I thought I had done everything right with this process. And, um, I'm glad that we're moving forward and, and, and that's it.
Okay, um, I'd like to ask staff if the, uh, we, we're voting on um, moving this forward on, on time and resources, but there was a, uh, the option or the idea of having a workshop presented here. Um, so is the motion to have a workshop or is it to have staff work on it without the workshop?
I think the motion could be to have a workshop, but if the workshop could staff, please come with information regarding, um, how we could deal internally with this, you know, any, any illegal activity or, um, or Brown Act violations. And how do we, um, go ahead, go ahead.
Maybe even talk to have staff, you know, check with other cities. That's what they do. You know, it's, it, it's always good to have best practices.
Yeah.
Checking with other cities, the opportunity to incorporate things that are working real well in other cities that we can bring to us and, and include as best practices.
Yeah. And I think one of the things also I want the public to understand is things, if you just Google council member activities, like, you know, someone just mentioned LA tonight. I mean, even the city of Anaheim and the discussions they had with their chamber of commerce. The mayor and the chamber of commerce are facing jail time for the conversations they had. So things are changing. They're not, they, they cannot continue good old boys club like they were before. And that's what we need to change going forward. It needs to be ethical. It needs to be out in public. City business needs to be done in front of the city. And, um, by holding us accountable to the rules that make that happen will only make us a better place to live.
Okay.
So I guess the motion is yes, spend some time, um, like Councilmember Rary said, maybe benchmarking other cities, coming back with solutions of things that we've never looked at before, like Brown Act and illegal activity. And then having a town hall and seeing how the public feels because this I think impacts them a whole lot. I mean, a lot of our decisions are made and we want them to be super crystal clear and public.
Well, I think a workshop is, I mean,
Workshop.
We're, we're presenting something to them and because we're, we're done with it, want to get their feedback on it. A workshop allows them to also give us feedback during that.
So do you think we should have a meeting first to go over all staff findings and then we move on to the workshop? Or should we have a workshop in conjunction with them finding, bringing their findings? Just get it all done at once?
Yeah, just get it all done at once. And that, that's part of the staff report. Here's, here's what other cities are doing. And then we can incorporate, you know, all of us come with our notes. Um, not, not walk in and say, oh, let me see, what is there? So let's, let's make sure that we prepare to talk about things that we think to be removed or, um, some of the things from staff that we should incorporate from that other cities are doing and, and create best.
Yeah. Darren, does that make sense? And it's a little called or Damian, whoever's going to write it up.
I, I, for myself, I would appreciate a, a very clear idea of what the council expect is expecting. I've heard different things from each of you and I can combine them all, but I, I want to make sure that, that we get this right.
I think number one, um, benchmark other cities. And, um, number two, can we incorporate, uh, Brown Act violations? And anything else up, any other, you know, I, cause right now I think it says no federal or anything like that. Like it should be the whole kit and caboodle. I can't remember. I highlighted it, but I can't find it now.
It, the policy currently does not apply to state or federal law violations because those violations have separate penalty schemes in place that I believe are, that preempt Brentwood from being able to, to enforce those, those rules.
So we might not be able to, so if we could research, if we can bring it forward, we might not enforce something, but then if we find out out of something, then we forward that to the appropriate agency.
That can certainly be looked at.
Okay. So we should do that. And then, um, once we have that information, we're going to have a workshop where it gets presented to us and, um, and the public. And we can determine what adjustments we want to make to our policy.
So what I've heard, Councilmember Mendoza, is that you'd like to have staff research where other cities are doing by way of their ethics and conduct policies.
Mm-hmm.
And, and in doing that, did you want them to make suggestions on what to include in, in, in any revisions to Brentwood's policy or just provide the council with a list of uh, just, just sample policies to look at?
I think if you find, you know, you can give us the copies of them in the agenda packet. And if you find some like great nuggets from other, other cities that they're doing some, they have some best practices that we like, you can highlight those.
Okay. And you, do you have any preference on Northern or Southern California or both? Just somewhere? I would say, I'd recommend staying in California.
Yeah, I would say both. And, um, I would think that cities that have had issues probably have adjusted their policies like Anaheim. So maybe we could see if they've updated it after um, their interactions with the chamber of commerce.
All right. And, and then so that, that, I think that's the policy issue, uh, or what you're asking for with regard to benchmarking policies. You've also asked whether or not we can incorporate uh, Brown Act violations into your policy to have council be able to enforce those, if, if I'm getting that right.
It's what options can we enforce something on it? Or if it comes to council and we decide there is a clear violation, then it's our role to forward that to the DA's office as a city, right? Because the only way the DA finds out about something is if someone calls them and tells them. So then do we take on that role as a city of calling them and telling them there's been a Brown Act violation?
I don't think, I, I'm not aware of any cities that, that do that specifically. Usually it's individuals that will file that, but we can certainly see if any other cities have a policy in that regard.
Okay. Or, and if it's legal for us to do it.
All right. Where, you would also mention state, other state law violations.
Yeah. So I mean, I mean, anytime that you would tell me I should call the police, we should probably bring that forward and talk about it, right? It's just anytime that, anytime we think that a law may have been broken, then that should come forward and we should just talk about it.
Well, and again, I, again, that goes to the question of whether or not the council has the authority to do that. And so that would be one of those issues we need to look at. Again, because the state has provisions in place to handle such violations and they preempted the field in most of those.
Only if they find out about it. Well, if they don't find out about it, but we know about it, then you're expecting me to sit with someone on council that may have broken the law.
I, I, I'm also not expecting the council to engage in a discussion on a hypothetical or, or an allegation against someone who has due process rights, which would get not only the city in trouble, but also the individual council member making those allegations potentially.
Okay. So why?
So it is, and it's, it's protecting a lot of different people, these rules. Um, and so trying to just try and make sure we get this, get this captured correctly on what you're looking for. So.
So why don't you just, can you research to see what options we have in that regard?
Yes, I'll, I'll probably bring on outside counsel on this one.
Okay.
On area that, that, that we do on a, on a regular basis here. And also I think it would, it would benefit from having someone who's not employed by the five of you uh, coming up with the, with the conclusions on that.
Okay. And then after we get all of that, then a workshop.
All right. Um, so those, those are things, benchmarking the other cities, asking about incorporating the Brown Act violations into the policy as well as, uh, other state law violations or federal law violations.
Yeah. And if anyone else on council wants to add anything, I mean, th- this should be all open to anyone that has any concerns about the policy. So.
Yeah, I'm not hearing anything, Councilmember Mendoza. I,
Okay.
Uh, Mr. Gail, Darren, any additional question regarding this?
No, but if you don't mind, I don't mind typing this up real quick. Uh, Councilmember Mendoza, you know, our direction's going to come out of this motion. So we can just type up real quick a few bullet points so that we know exactly, uh, what staff's supposed to bring back.
Okay, thanks.
So now that everyone is sitting here in silence, who is supposed to be typing up the bullet points? Uh, is it Darren?
Darren is doing it right now, Mr. Mayor.
Just, just making sure I didn't miss it.
You, you, you mean you haven't finished typing it yet?
If you would like, we could move on to the next item and come back if that gives Darren more time.
Sounds like that's the case, Mr. Mayor. If you want to just, uh, if the council, it's okay with the council, if we just move on to the next item and then come back to this one in, in a few, when you're done.
Thank you. At this time then, we will move into item E two one, uh, a future agenda item request um, from Councilmember Mendoza related to increasing teen and young adult events, adding teen, young adult resource links to the city website. Councilmember Mendoza?
This was, um, it's like, it's, I brought it forward, but it's actually Councilmember Meyer's original idea. So she wanted to do something more with, uh, mental health for kids and for teens and young adults. And we decided we were going to go to, um, the interagency meeting, which has police department, fire department, um, school, eight, you know, school districts, you know, Liberty and Brentwood. Districts, you know, Liberty and Brentwood, as well as LMC, and what we found out is they have a lot of resources available, they've gotten a lot of extra funding. But one of the things that we thought, so we have resources available for them. We want to find one place on the city website, kind of like we do for our senior citizens, where there's a page with a bunch of information. So if we could have a, we, I want a page where it will link back to the school. Websites that have all that information, the LMC and all that good stuff, and then also the PAL program. PAL program, so maybe it can live somewhere around there. But we need a place for people to be able to find these resources because we keep saying there's no resources. But there are, it's just, they're very, very difficult to find, so if we can aid in making it easier for people to find resources. That would be fantastic. The other part was. We talked about there not being much for kids to do. Mr. Volta talked about how it was fantastic at homecoming, that all of the kids got together, it was a fantastic night, everyone had a great time. And there's very few instances where there's something for all of these teenagers to get to do, so. When we were brainstorming about it, we came up with the idea of having. A couple of events during the summer to start with the first year, something. Along the lines of how we have movies in the parks for the little kids and concerts in the parks for the adults, but where can we add? Two two Friday nights for the teens, young adults. And I'm not sure what that looks like, you know, we brainstormed on talent shows, karaoke, open mic, you know, all of that good stuff. Well, I'm sorry.
Battle of the Bands?
Yeah, Battle of the Bands. I am not the artistic person, and that's why we have great counsel, I'm the spreadsheet girl. So I was thinking that we could put an item forward where Parks and Rec could work on something like this, leverage their findings, you know, they know how much it costs to have events downtown. And maybe partner, you know, with. With our youth commission, because they're, you know, get them involved, they should have a say. And maybe Susanna Meyer can be the conduit from council and, you know, attend, you know, the youth commission meetings when they're working on this. And come up with two events, figure out what the expense would be, figure out if we could fit it in the budget. You know, everyone talks about we need to do something for youth and we don't, and I, we just need to put our money where our mouth is and. And help them out, they need something and they're hungry for it, so I would like to spend staff time. On researching what it would take to get a couple of events done first, events done for next summer. But I wanted to go to the youth commission first, along with Councilmember Meyer, just because. You're artistic. And what do those look like? What? And what would they take and what do the teens want to see? So. That's, you know, an agenda item for the youth is what I'm looking for. I can't hear you, Mayor, I'm sorry.
Thank you. At this time, we will open public comments, turn to Margaret.
I received no written public comments on this item, if you wish to speak on this item, please raise your hand using the Zoom feature, I'll call your name if provided and you speak. Remarks are limited to three minutes per person and your microphone will be muted after the timer has expired. And I'm seeing no hands raised.
Okay, at this time we'll close public comments, move into council discussion, Councilmember Meyer.
Thank you. Um, I absolutely appreciate this item coming forward and I want to be clear that. While this is something we've been talking about and having discussion about, the events part of it wasn't something that I brought up. And this is just kind of a clear example of what happens when something goes through its correct process and goes to its correct committees and. And has the right people contributing to the conversation, so I am. Very grateful that this went to the interagency committee so that it could be. Filled out even more, that the idea could become even more feasible and more exactly what it is that our youth need. So I'm completely in support of it, would love to be involved in it however I can. I believe that the the roundtable leadership. Uh, group has spoken about some youth activities as well and along the lines with what. Councilmember Mendoza was just bringing up. And I think the other thing to note is that while I was in discussions and meetings with the police department and Parks and Rec. Before bringing this to council as a suggestion. We we were able to bring in a lot of information about nonprofits. That support youth services and mental health and bullying and a lot of different issues. That we hadn't been aware of before or that the city hadn't been aware of before, so. In coming up with this designated page of resources. And what the schools offer and, you know, city offers, et cetera, et cetera. I would like to incorporate what nonprofits are serving specifically. Brentwood youth and teens when it comes to mental health or bullying or. Any kind of counseling or or activities that are helping with development of mentorship and that kind of thing, so. I very definitely, like I said, I couldn't support this anymore. I think, again, this is just the perfect example of how. City council policy is is created and how good things are supposed to happen. In the city with all of this different input together that is coming up with something that's this solid of a plan. So, thank you, Councilmember Mendoza.
I also want to fully support this idea. From the very first that we moved to Brentwood with our young kids. And raised my family here and. Have participated with families and in youth. For twenty one years here in Brentwood. There's been a common frustration with many families and that is, there's not enough for our kids to do. I've heard it thousands, if not millions of times and. One of the callers earlier, I believe it was Ms. Davis Pearson. Commented that some of the fights she'd seen in the parks, she attached that to. The the young people not having enough to do, which. Could could be a component of it as well, I think that having the youth commission involved in this is an outstanding idea. And instead of having repetitive or. I'm sorry, I've been traveling since two o'clock this morning. Instead of having nonprofits that are all doing similar things. Not be aware of what each other's resources are, but like like you'd mentioned, making sure that there is a place. That our families can go in our, this community, to find out all of the things that are available, all of the resources that are available. And so that we don't have redundant, I think this is an outstanding idea. I'm gonna quit because I'm babbling now, Councilmember Rary.
I too think it's a great idea. You know, when we moved here in ninety five. My my oldest son, I think he was ten at the time, and he. The Rock and Bowl was the only thing for kids to do, but. It was interesting, just as we were checking out Brentwood. Right there where MJ's is, was an arcade. But it wasn't, it was, it had closed its doors, but it still had all the stuff inside, so you could see the arcade in there and it's like. Oh, it'd be so nice to still have that. Um, so I I think it's a great idea to have something, while Rock and Bowl was great. You know, only my two older kids went to that, by the time the two younger ones, there was actually a place, and I think it was called The House. Um, off of Brentwood Boulevard and they had bands there for all the teenagers to hang out at, and I think it costs. Like two or three dollars for the kids to go in there and hang out. And they started doing a community garden back there, I think they had yoga for the kids. And so those were, that was where my my two younger kids hung out most of the time. Um, so having. Having something else that they can do during the, you know, during the weekends or weekend or weekend nights. Would be wonderful for for our teens. It's something for them to look forward to and go and 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 concur with all the rest of the team. And possibly even teens from, well, this is the other problem, possibly teens from other cities. Which hopefully it's all good kids coming in to do this stuff, but. Yeah, I I think this is a wonderful idea.
Hey, do I have a motion on item E two point two?
So I will make a motion to spend staff time. On two things, the first one is. Developing a page which would include all resources from the high schools and nonprofits. Where parents or kids could go get information, whether it's, and it's mostly around mental health, I think is what we need a lot of resources on. And then the second portion would be to create a.
Parents too.
For parents and and the kids, yeah. Yes, the for both, the parents and the kids. And then the second part is to spend staff time for an agenda item for the youth commission. To determine if we can produce two events for them during next summer. That would have some kind of entertainment factor, whatever the case may be, that would welcome kids, so it doesn't necessarily have to be just music, it could be poetry, it could be a skit, whatever it is. Just some kind of entertainment and. Figure out what the best way to do that is, I know you were talking about other kids, do we do it through the schools, how do how do we get the information out there, so. I think that'd be a great activity for youth and then have. A council liaison involved as well, if Councilmember Meyer would like to do that.
And I'd like to second that.
First and the second, Damian?
Damian has a question.
Yeah, no, just just briefly. I I think everything from your motion is fine, Councilmember Mendoza. The only thing I might pause on is the appointment of Councilmember Meyer. Specifically this time, it's not that she can't do it, but it might require a separate, a separate, very brief agenda item to do that.
Okay, sounds good, thank you.
Thank you.
I'll second it.
The first and the second, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Mendoza?
Yes.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Rary?
I.
Vice Mayor Rodriguez?
Hi.
Mayor Bryant?
Hi.
Motion carries unanimous?
We'll move back on to item E two point one. And ask if our acting city manager is ready, it looks like he is, Darren.
You're on mute, Darren, sorry. Were you saying something?
It was very insightful. Here are the items that I heard, number one, to benchmark other city ethic. And conduct policies include copies of the policies in a future staff report and highlight best practices. To benchmark policies from cities that might have recently updated their policy or dealt with recent violations. Review city council option, discuss possible violations of state and federal laws during regular council meetings. And refers to the appropriate legal agencies. Specifically consider council options for possible Brown Act violations. And once information is collected, as mentioned above, hold a workshop for council and public discussion. To recommend updated council ethic and conduct policy.
So moved.
First.
Second. And we're all gonna go into, this is all gonna be in a workshop, correct? This is a whole bunch of different agenda items.
Correct.
Okay. Yes, second.
Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Mendoza?
Yes.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Rary?
I.
Vice Mayor Rodriguez?
I said I, Margaret.
Thank you, Mayor Bryant?
I.
Motion carries unanimous?
Thank you. At this time, do I have a motion for adjournment?
So moved.
Second.
First and second, roll call vote.
Councilmember Mendoza?
Yes.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Rary?
I.
Vice Mayor Rodriguez?
I.
Mayor Bryant?
I.
Motion carries unanimous?
We are adjourned, thank you everyone, be safe.